Good afternoon and welcome to this July 16 meeting of the Savannah Chatham Board of Public Education. As I say, this is July 16, 2020. This is our regular board meeting. This date was moved back in January from our original meeting time monthly because of the holiday with the Fourth and a conflict which some board members had with being here on Wednesday. So for those of you who got concerned and confused because we were on Thursday, that's the reason. Welcome you here today. I asked Ms. Mayor Davis-Brant, our secretary, if this meeting has been advertised in accordance with all of the state statutes, and she assures me that it has. I would also like to announce that the meeting is being live streamed on the district website at www.sccps.com. And you can either be with us live now or you can watch it later. If you were not able to be with us this morning for the informal meeting, that was also streamed and taped, and I would encourage you to be a part of that at your own convenience. We were able to have the head of public health in Savannah with us, and we also heard the plan for reopening our schools. And you will see that same presentation this afternoon, but if you'd like to watch the early morning edition, you can do that also. I welcome you here. Times are still interesting for us. I am here. The superintendent is here at Whitney in our regular meeting spot, and the secretary is here with me. The eight board members are remotely streamed in from their homes and places of employment. So we will proceed. We have a rather long meeting agenda this afternoon, and so we ask that you stay with us and learn a lot. We know that this particular vote today on changes on our calendar, school year calendar, have been on the front of everyone's listening and hearing charts, and so we will ask that you listen to us as we try to give our explanations and reasons for why things are being done in a certain way. I would like to thank personally, and I know I do this on behalf of the board members, I would like to thank personally all of those parents and grandparents and friends of our system who have contacted me to give me their opinions about what actions we should take. Overall and uniformly, the opinions have been well thought out, well presented, and whether we can always do what someone wants us to do, I respect civility as they move forward with their own ideas of how our school system should work. So thank you to parents and others in our community. If you will, please stand with me in your home sites as we pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
It is always customary that we recognize those employees, past employees, students who have passed away over the last... Oh, I'm sorry. Agenda? I'm sorry. I need to get the agenda approved. I skipped a page here. Could I have a motion that we approve the agenda, please? I'm going to call on Dr. Hoskins-Brian.
Certainly. I move that the agenda be approved with the deletion of item 8.15, Policy DJE for purchasing, and revision of item 4.02 deaths.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Ms. Hines, seconds. All in favor, raise your hands, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. The motion passes. The agenda is approved. Moving forward now, I have no other announcements at this point.
We have a second item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Dr. Buck. My apologies. I also move that the approved agenda be amended to add item 14.02, the tentative adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget for all funds.
Heard that motion. Is there a second? Ms. Hines, seconds? Any questions? Any comments? All in favor, raise your hands, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Thank you. That amendment has been approved. Now can I move forward? You know, maybe if I do this long enough, I'll learn how to do it. Moving forward, we have had several deaths of employees, students, former board members during this month from our employees. Kimberly Chapel Stevens was a retired principal from the Fresh Start program. She also had been very active in the government of Thunderbolt, Georgia. Ruby Williams, elementary teacher from Island's Elementary School. Latonya Williams, a young student from Beach High School, Rising Junior, was killed in a violent accident. And lastly, Ms. Emma M. Adler, who was a board member, well-known in our community. We would probably not still have May Day and most of the historic part of our district, had it not been for Ms. Adler. And she passed away after recently, I believe, celebrating her 90th birthday. And so I would ask that you bow your heads with me as we consider the lives of these folks. Thank you. First on our agenda today is a report from the superintendent, and she has several different things that she'll be presenting.
Thank you. For President Buck, officers and members of the board, it's my pleasure to provide an operational update for you today. It does fold quite neatly into the presentation we made this morning on the reopening of school proposals. But I'm going to ask Mr. Hattiger to pull up the presentation that speaks to other operational items. Some of them you may have heard before, but we also invite your attention to these items as well. Of course, we've been focusing on safety first, and like Dr. Buck and many of you, I've heard from hundreds of people. I really appreciate those who've expressed their support and concern about reopening. All of those comments have been received by us, and we have considered them as we are trying to craft the most... Probably the, I don't know, it's the straightest times for us, but certainly crafting a plan that we think will serve our children the best way that we can. I'm sorry. I ask Mr. Hattiger to move the slide. Thank you so much. As you heard earlier, we've been in regular communication with the Coastal Health District. They have provided daily updates for us, which I have provided for you. And then a very strong source of support for us has been our staff and our parents who have communicated with us continuously. And then I must acknowledge the support of about 135 people from across this community who've expressed their opinions regarding the research we provided, but have also provided great guidance for us, given their own life experiences. As you heard earlier, they are representative of nearly every segment of this community. I'm very proud of the work that they did. I think I spoke recently about one of our task force committee members is currently living in China, and she provided us a lot of good information regarding what they are doing there as they have mitigated some of the situations that they faced around coronavirus. So we're excited that the plan that we present today is really based on safety first, but also reflects data from a number of sources, and you'll hear about that again in the next few moments. You'll move slide. So again, I talked about the reopening task force. We had three virtual meetings, our last being July 9. We had 13 functional breakouts, and they were very direct. You the comments from those teams, and we're excited that many of them have agreed to continue to serve with us during this very challenging time. And out of that will come another work group that will give specific attention to our special populations, our students with disabilities and our students for whom English is not their first language. We want to make sure that we are giving special attention to their needs, and we're doing that through continuation of a work group that's dedicated to looking at their specific needs and how we're serving them. You also heard earlier, school readiness survey results. We offered the survey opportunity to our 25,000 families, and we received responses from more than 12,000 of those families. Of course, we scrubbed the data pretty well, so we looked for those people who may have wanted to reply five or six different times. So, you know, in the age of technology, we all have that. But we feel very confident that most of those results reflected on the ideas and thoughts of our families up until the time that we closed the survey, which was June 26. You also may have heard through the media that we had a pilot that happened at Gaston and Formy, and at that time, we socially distanced those schools, and we ran a summer camp for three days and really learned a lot from that experience. But we also socially distanced two other schools, Beach High School and New Hampstead High School. At this time, we are continuing to socially distance our schools, which means outfitting the classrooms and the spaces with the six-feet markers and looking at the capacity of those rooms, while we're also socially distancing and equipping all of our other meeting rooms, much like the room we're in today. It looked very different the last time we were in it, but it now meets the CDC requirement. So we want to thank our staff who were able to get those done, from the pilot to the staff who helped us with the reopening task force, as well as those staff who helped us to get the surveys out and get them collected. Our staff survey closed just July 10, and you saw some preliminaries from that report this morning, but we do expect to provide a full report on that as well in the coming days. Ready? So here are some other things that we're working on. We want you to know that we have heard from a lot of staff who are pretty anxious about returning to work, particularly those who are school-based. Staff will continue to receive updated return-to-work guidance. We are operating in a pandemic, and that means that our work conditions will have to change. In March, we tried to get as many people as possible working remotely, and even our teachers and our families and staff do that as well. For the return to this fall, we will have different return-to-work guidance. Of course, we have hygiene protocols, social distancing protocols, but we also have to look at how we support our families and our staff as well as provide support for those persons who have responsibility for maintaining the facilities. So lots of different pieces for our return-to-work guidance, which our staff receive in coming days. We're also working on a facility access plan. You know, the last time we talked, we still had people who had items in the building, wanted to retrieve those items. We provided opportunities for that to happen, but now we're moving on to phase two for our transitioning young people, transition staff, and then, of course, opening up some of the buildings for other activities. Though the buildings are close to the public, there is some activity that has to happen in the buildings, and that calls for a different approach. We are refining our existing safety protocols to match the safety guidelines that we have been made aware of. And of course, also we'll see and heard about our introduction of our learning management system, which we're very excited about, which allows us to do a much better job in virtual learning across the district going forward. Want to thank the board for hearing those requests from us and approving not only the purchase of the learning management system, but also content management system and the additional devices that we will need for our students. You'll see here that we are planning for the delivery and distribution of those additional devices that we will have purchased over the next few weeks as well. We will be finalizing the enrollment and the official launch of our eLearning Academy, which is a permanent virtual learning option for those parents and families who feel that they need it. We're excited about the opportunity to serve our students in this way. Next slide. Again, I referenced the work groups that will be developing, and we've had some parents and staff already volunteer to make sure that we have a focused and effective plan for our students with disabilities and our ELL students. I do want you to know that we are not only concerned about our students, but we're also concerned about staff. And I've said that repeatedly, that it is about the safety of students and staff. And that means that we must give attention to their social emotional needs as well. So we have already launched, as I think I became previously, a school counseling webpage, but we're also focusing on how to help our staff transition back into this work environment. You will see a posting of our assessment calendar that while we're expected, while we are expecting that there will be some change to the state assessment, we are required by policy to post an assessment calendar. We will continue to review our policies because some will require modifications, and we do know that under these circumstances, we've had to make some adjustments already. I want to take a few moments to thank our community partners. Many of them have reached out to us, United Way, our faith community. Many of the nonprofits have all volunteered to help us offer great assistance to our families, and each doing that in ways that their agencies can continue to do so. We will also have some opportunities for volunteers. Our love volunteers and all the other volunteers in our community have said, let us know how we can help, even in this virtual environment. And then, of course, you know, one of the things that's most challenging for us at this time is how do we celebrate the way we normally do when we have something as beautiful as our new white-blow school being ready for occupation? And then, of course, all those things that we planned for Island's High School auditorium, I'm sorry, stadium. And then, of course, we have some other building projects that we know. Please know that we are just as excited as we would be normally. We just know that we'll have to manage those things differently. You can move forward. So I will ask you to please unpack your patience and practice compassion. It has been a very challenging time for us, but just know that all of us are working toward the goal of face-to-face instruction under the safest conditions possible. That is not out of the question. What I do know is that as a community, if we come together and do what we need to do to make things work for our children, they will be able to come and feel those hugs and get those kisses that they are craving, and frankly, we're craving them too. So, Dr. Buck, members and officers of the board, thank you for allowing me to share this operational update. There's so much more that you will learn than I'm asking for more patience as we continue to move through this process. We will provide additional updates when we meet at our August meeting and share all the things that we have done through that time. Want to offer a special thanks to our staff for all the hard work they've done and to our supportive community, and of course, to our supportive board. Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Part of the superintendent's report, we also will have the monthly financial statements, which will be followed by the budget process update. Mr. Larry Jackson is available to provide the monthly financial statements update to the board.
Oops, sorry about that. All right, can you see my screen? I'm sorry.
They can see the screen, and we can hear you.
Yes, okay, perfect. I'll begin with the general fund. Property tax collections are currently at 92% of the budget as compared to 91% of last year. Right now, we don't have our final 2019, 2020 tax collections. We won't get that number until September because the upcoming July and August tax collections are accrued back to last year. The general fund is reported on the modified accrual basis of accounting. This means that revenues are recorded when they are measurable and available. For property taxes available includes collections within 60 days after year end. This is the reason we accrue the July and August tax collections to the prior year. The total general fund actual revenues right now are right at 90% of the current modified budget as compared to 90% of last year. As far as the expenditures in the general fund, the actual expenditures for teachers are 89%, which is lower than expected range of 90%. Other support salaries are 89%, which is also lower than the expected range. Most of that is due to the period of the end of the year, which we were closed. The employee benefits expenditures are 80% of the current modified budget as compared to 87% of last year. We are anticipating coming in under budget in this category by the end of the fiscal year. The total general fund expenditures are 84% of the current modified budget as compared to 88% last year. One of the funds that we wanted to continue to monitor was food service. I will skip down to page 19 of the financial report. We have since the, since we actually sent the report to the board members, we were able to include the actual operating transfers from the general fund. So year-to-date, we're showing a positive income, a net income of $59,000 in the food service fund. We still have a lot of expenditures in the month of June, and we have a remaining transfer of about $1.6 million to cover some of the expenditures that we incurred during the month of June. Keep in mind that for food service, they were not really able to have income like they normally would when schools were open during the month of April and May and the beginning of June. But that operating transfer is going to help to make sure they do not go in the negative this year. As far as the other funds, we have no concerns about any other other funds at this point. We have one more month of financial reporting for FY '20. Then we're going to have some audit adjustments and audit corrections during July and August that we're also going to include, and hopefully, we will be able to give you, give the board an audit report hopefully by the middle of October. At this time, this completes my report on the May 31, 2020 financial. Any questions?
Any questions to Mr. Jackson? I can't, I can't see the board, so...
If Mr. Jackson would stop his screen share, we'll bring back the full tiles of the board.
Thank you. Dr. Hoskins-Brian has a question.
Thank you. I have questions about three funds. The first fund is the on page 10, the Fund 439, Victoria Jenkins. There's an, that's overspent in the travel category, and that was kind of, that seemed odd since this was a... seemed odd since this was a, since we had a shutdown this year. So is that from the fall?
Yes, more than likely, that's, that is from the period prior to March. As you can see, year-to-date, we have not received the, the interest payment from the foundation itself. You don't, you see there are no revenue listed above, but we do have some small expenditure adjustments that we could make, one for field trips and the other for travel. But those, all of those expenditures occurred before March.
That, that just kind of drew my attention that we hadn't received the funding and we allowed them to overspend in that category. And then Title I and Title III both have pretty significant amounts in hardware. Pages 16 and 17 that are unspent, is that where we're getting some of the money for the shelter-in-place technology that we need? $29,000 in the hardware for Title III and looks like there's $795,000 in Title I.
I know for a fact that a portion of those funds in Title I is able to pay to buy equipment for their particular schools. I will have to get back with you to get with Dave and Technology to see what else was spent for that particular purpose, but I, I know for a fact that a portion was. I'll just have to get you the exact dollar amount.
Well, just to, I don't need the exact dollar amount. The reason I ask is because those are large dollar amounts under equipment and there's no spending.
Right.
And I know we've been spending a lot to get ourselves ready for technology. I was just wondering, especially for English, for ESOL learners, some of the funding is specifically for them. We know that there's going to be some challenges there. Seems like that, seems like there could or should be some spending.
Yes, and it probably was. Again, I can get with Dave and probably I need to get with those grant directors, those grant managers, because some of that could have been planned for the summer, but I need to get the grant managers first. Now, you may see some additional expenditures that may show up in June, but let me give the grant managers, grant directors, and I will get a response to the board.
Paul Collins, Dr. Howard Howell, Ms. Howell, Dr. Vett would like to respond.
Thank you so much. Please remember that we did receive a school improvement grant for a significant, I want to say almost $2 million, I want to say that, might be 1.2 or 2.1. But that does involve the purchase of technology. You will recall adopting, will recall receiving those as a part of the board agenda and board action. I do believe that many of the expenditures associated with that grant that we applied for involve technology. So we will provide that information. In fact, you should receive that information before the close of this meeting.
Indeed.
We do not receive a lot of dollars, so let me take this opportunity to say, we don't receive a lot of dollars for ESOL students. That's a Title III allocation, and most of those dollars we provide for serving those young people. It is a concern that we have raised for several years, and we will continue to raise it. But many of those dollars are not allocated specifically to education of those particular students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Howard Howell, please.
Yes, I'm just going to say that perhaps with Title I, the carry-forward expenditures have been extended from typically in September all the way out to December, so there's probably another reason why you see that amount that's in Title I due to carry-forward, the carry-forward funds being, the state allowing them to extend the expenditures of those funds as well.
That is correct. Normally, those grants would, would not end until September 30th, so, but we do have an extension to December 31st. But normally, those grants do not end until September 30th anyway. And just for note, I know she mentioned Title III. Actually, for the equipment in Title III on page 16, the adopted budget was $29,000, but once they completed the consolidated application, they actually moved all of that budget to other areas. So there was no, no budget for equipment and hardware in Title III.
Thank you. I see that shaded.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Howell, please.
I want to go back to the food service report for a moment. I feel our food service department did an outstanding job in their food delivery for our, for our students. And I'm just wondering, since they did not have income coming in at that time, how is that going to be done in the future? Is there going to be an uphill battle to get food service online correctly since they did not get that income?
Fortunately, they were able to receive a little money from the limited feeding we were able to do during, I believe, April and May. But to start the upcoming year, as we roll out the plan, that's something that we are looking at. Hopefully, we plan to, to do the same thing we were able to do late spring so that they will have some income coming in. But we're, we're going to look at this fund and operation very closely over the next few months, along with all of, all of the operations and grants over the next few months. But more so this one because this, this operates more like an enterprise, so they're in the business of making money.
Well, I certainly hope that we, going forward, have some idea of how we're going to get them from being constantly and forever in the red in that they provide such a vital service to so many, whether that means, you know, looking for other resources other than grants, that kind of thing, but some kind of way that we can bring them in-house so that we don't have to always worry that they're going to be working in the red. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And we were headed down the right road, but the pandemic kind of put everything on hold, but we were going down the right road.
Anything else about financial statements, or can we move on to the budget process? Ms. Jackson, are you doing the budget process?
Paige Cooley will do the budget process.
Ms. Cooley will be doing that.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, welcome, Ms. Cooley.
Okay, I'm going to go over the budget process for fiscal year '21. These are the items that I'm planning to cover today. I'm going to provide an update on the general fund budget. We're going to talk about all the fund revenues and expenditures. And I also just wanted to announce that our millage rate was approved by the Chatham County Commissioners, the 18.881 mills, which is no mills increase. On this slide, I'm, I would like to show that our local funding highlights, our total local revenue of 11.3 million is an $11.3 million increase. On the next slide, on our revenues, our state revenues decreased by $21.7 million. And I've put different areas, our big reduction was an austerity reduction of $16 million, and then our TRS rate decrease and where the state funded us for 10-month funding as opposed to 12-month funding that was done in fiscal year '20. So that cost us $5.5 million. On this next slide, it shows the state mandated expenditures went down by $1.2 million. So these are the areas that we tried to cut out of the budget and the areas that went up. TRS rate decrease was the big reduction of $5.5 million, and the personnel step increase, 4.4, went up. On this next slide, it is some of our typical changes where we had to increase our workers' comp. On the charter school allocation, our allocation went down from the state, so we anticipate the charter school reductions just as our school sites reduce from the state. In the other operating, we have discussed in the past about the contracted legal fees going up. The first item was the contingency, we're restoring it back to half a million. The restore staffing reserve back to a million. The enrollment staffing variance has gone up 2.8 million, and that's due to movement to other grades and areas of the students. And then we also did earn some extra dollars for QBE earned positions because we did go up in a gifted and remedial ed. And then the salary and operation savings of 2.25 million is areas that we are cutting. We're looking at cutting out overtime, some overtime, utilities, professional services, staff development, field trips, travel, local mileage, inside printing. And then the last item on this page is we are cutting out the teacher incentives of 1.5 million. This is a continuation of some of our expenditures. We are going to need to hire a principal and secretary in January for the new school opening of the new Hampstead K-8 school. And that's going to be with the items that have to be purchased for the school. There's half a million dollars in there for the non-salary items, and then the other $123,212 is to cover the salary for the half a principal and half a secretary for half a year. The next item is our startup costs for the e-learning center, and that's $50,000 that we set aside to set up the office for the e-learning center. And then the next item is just our FCA local facility plan, Eastfosh 4. Then the risk management liability risk pool, that extra $504,000 is based on an increase in our insurance cost this year for fiscal year '21. And then on the next one, we are going to decrease our general fund contribution to the Eastfosh 2 renovations by a million. We have paid off two big capital leases for our debt service transfer reduction, which is going to save us $1.7 million. We've paid off our energy management lease and our GMA 2013 buses. And then central office reductions, we have reorganized the staff centrally, some of the staff. We've eliminated some vacant positions, and we have cut out some non-salary reductions. On this slide, you will just see a summary of the total changes. You can see that our revenue total has gone down by 10.4 million and our expenditures by over $2 million. And as you can see, our projected general fund revenue and expenditures are the same this year with $445 million, and we will not be contributing anything to fund balance this year. On our debt service, this is one bit of good news. We've made our last bond payment of $2.2 million. That was made on July 7th. And we, and one thing I wanted to point out is we used the Eastfosh penny sales to pay off over $138 million in geo-bond debt. So this has saved local tax, local, local property taxes to property owners with this Eastfosh. So from all the bad news we've been receiving lately, this is at least one good, good piece of information. On this next slide, these are our figures for the capital projects funds, and these were revised on June 4th to show some decreases in anticipated revenues and expenditures for this year. On this next slide, this is the special revenue funds, and I, one thing I want to point out on this slide is this includes the Fund 420, which is the $10.9 million in the CARES Act. Of this $10.9 million, this includes the private schools and the charter school money as well. The cabinet is currently working on finalizing where this money is going to be spent, and they will have that to you this month. Other areas on here are the consolidated applications for most of these grants that are listed here. They're going to be completed in the fall, and these are just the preliminary numbers at this time. And that follows that also on to this second slide 12. On this next slide, this is just, it just shows the revenues and expenditures for our internal service funds, which include our workers' comp, unemployment, and our employee dental plan. On slide 14, this is just a graph showing our total budget for fiscal year '21 with all funds, which are $616.6 million. As you can see on the graph, obviously, our general fund makes up the largest amount of it at 72%. The special revenue includes that ACT CARES grant, so that has gone up a little bit compared to last year because we added that $10.9 million in, so that's about 12.9%. Capital projects at 13.2%, and the other items, very small amounts. And one thing I did want to announce is we are planning two budget hearings as required by law before the final adoption, so those will be coming very shortly. And does anybody have any questions?
Questions of board members.
Dr. Buck, I don't think you can see my hand, but this is.
Okay, Ms. Wade, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cooley, for your presentation and explanation that kind of where we are on the budget process, because typically, we're not talking about this in July and August. I see in here the CARES Act. I heard during the operational savings that some of those are probably COVID-related. Does this budget include, to our best guess, COVID-related changes in expenses and revenue?
We are going to be using most of the CARES Act money for those COVID-related expenses. This other is more of our regular operating, and the CARES Act is going to be where we're going to be using the majority of our money to purchase things like a mask, items needed for the students, possible Chromebooks. The cabinet is working on that now, so I am not privy to the exact details of exactly the way they're going to spend it, but that is where the majority of all COVID expenses are going to come out of that CARES Act money, not from this budget.
But I know there's got to be some related savings. I mean, you talked about cutting travel. Obviously, no one in the district is going to be traveling anytime soon, field trips, other things like that. Those are in here, and those are based on COVID?
Yes, ma'am. They are on slide six where it was salary and operating savings. That is the COVID, like the overtime that we will not need, the overtime, the utilities, the professional services, the staff development, the field trips, the travel, the local mileage, inside printing costs. So yes, the savings are, they're figured in, as you can see in some of those, but the big savings that you're talking about where we cut for the COVID-related are in that $2,250,000.
What about transportation savings?
At this time, I have not cut anything out of transportation because if we, I think at this time, we're working towards bringing the students back if things improve, and it is going to cost an astronomical amount to transport those students to school because the buses will probably only be allowed to be filled up to maybe one-third of capacity. So I have left that alone because I don't, I know that our transportation is, would really increase dramatically, and if we do start back during the school year, I didn't want to deplete transportation at this time and make it so they could not transport the kids back in case we are able to bring the students back to in-person learning.
Thank you. That's a really good explanation. I think it might be helpful maybe next meeting to see what that budget would look like. I'm hoping certainly that we get back at some point and see what that budget for transportation was. would look like, maybe on a per month basis, just so we can start planning for that. And then one very small point on page three, talking about the charter school transportation revenue, again, that will be, sorry, my husband's taking out the trash. Anyway, the charter school transportation, obviously we're not going to start transporting them on day one, so that will decrease a small number, but I certainly want a message to the charter schools that we're not going to be charging you for transportation if we're not actually transporting you.
Exactly. Yes, ma'am, that's correct. That was in our initial projections and that number obviously unless, and we also do not really, what we do does not mean that that's the way that the charter schools are going to go, but you're right, we will not be transporting students if we are not transporting our own students. So that, that amount is going to decrease.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I have Dr. Howard Hall, then Ms. Hall.
Yes, have you finalized the calculation for the set of sites for the private schools and charter schools as it pertains to the CARES Act?
I came up with a projection and I know that academic affairs has been providing Mr. Jackson with an update because there were, I figured it on every single private school going in and, you know, it was quite a large number, but then we were seeing, they had until June 30th to turn in their enrollment and not everybody had applied for that. So Mr. Jackson may be able to give a more updated, if he has received it. We have an actual, Title I is actually in charge of that and working on those numbers for us now because my number included as if every single private school applied for it because I just assumed they would, but when we started to get the numbers in and the deadline, some of the private schools had not. And I know there was one very large private school that did not. So I don't know if they're going to be given an extension or if they came in at the last minute and Mr. Jackson may be able to answer that better.
And just to follow up, we had preliminary numbers. We don't have a final number yet because at the end of the legislative session, there was a talk about the state picking up the private school portion of their funding, of their allocations out of their money. So we're just waiting to get an answer from the state before we, we move forward. But we will bring back the information to the board on the final allocations, hopefully within, you know, within the next 30 days because we're trying to finalize it, get the grant and consolidate application, get it approved so we can start spending money.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Unmute your microphone, please.
I wanted to give a public service for a moment because I had a few calls from people who were wondering about the article in the newspaper about the milage rate being approved by the Chatham County Commission. And someone evidently mentioned that none of us were there to answer questions for that approval. And I wanted the public to understand that we do that as a courtesy, that's an arcane law evidently that our milage rate goes before the commission for approval, but actually we are all our own entities so that we don't actually need an approval. There is no veto power over us concerning our milage rate. And another example would be like the airport commission, the authority, they take their budget before the city of Savannah and it's approved there, but there's no actual veto right on the part of the city. It's just a courtesy. So I wanted to bring that out because I did get about three calls from there.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Ms. Cooley, for your report. I would like to know from you and Mr. Jackson, how many private schools are we referring Hello?
I think Larry tried to talk on mute maybe. Are you talking, Larry?
I'm sorry, yeah. If I'm not mistaken, the number of schools that actually, they actually had to apply through the state, if I'm not mistaken, we ended up with about 18 private schools, around about 18.
Okay.
I won't call you on the exact number, but it was no more than 18, it was around about 18.
All right. And the follow-up question is how much money is this we are going to receive that we have to distribute as well with the private schools or share with the private schools?
Out of the 10.9 million dollars.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
And that's why we were hoping the state would pick up their portion of it. There was some talk about that, so we're just waiting to get some more information. I think someone realized it wasn't fair to the school districts, so there was some talk about it.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments from board members, questions? Dr. Hoskins, Brown.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure I understood the answer to Mrs. Hines' question. So she asked how much was going to be shared and you identified that it was coming out of the 10.9? And what, so what portion of the 10.9 or maybe I missed the prorated per school portion?
That, that, we're still working on that number. Really, I was trying not to give, give that number, but to, just for information, it was about eight, a little over $800,000 that we would have to allocate to the private school.
But that's not final.
That's not final. That portion, we were, we are being told that the state may pick up that portion, but if not, it's a little over $800,000 that we would have to give up out of that eight, out of that 10.9 million dollars.
Dr. Buck, if I could, we have communicated with you on several occasions that this, there is a national debate and a pushback by public school districts regarding the unusual way that these calculations have been made and will continue to do that. We have pressed our state officials and shared with them, school boards included, the unfairness that we see associated with changing the formula at this time for the use of CARES Act money. That is why we cannot give anything definitive on it. We are continuing to press for them. If you want to use that same formula that you've been using, fine, but to change it in the middle of the game is not really fair and we, we're maintaining that. We hope to get some decision on it. That's why we're hesitating to offer an amount at this point. Thank you so much.
Any other comments? I would like to move on. We've still got a long afternoon. Any final questions of Mr. Jackson, Ms. Cooley, superintendent? Does that complete the superintendent's report? As we get ready to start into Board of Education matters, I had missed Ms. Hall's hand earlier and I would go back and call on her now because she wished to make a comment during the death portion of our agenda, Ms. Hall.
No, sir.
We have about 11 or so folks to speak, but instead of putting them under just general appearances, the first item we're going to take up has to do with the resolution on eight point, what is it, 8.16, 8.16. And so as we start that discussion under board matters, I'm moving that item up to the head of the board matters and I will call in the first person for speaking, who is Mr. Kerry Tanrath, Ms. Kerry Tanrath. Welcome and we're glad you're here with us today.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Kerry Tanrath. My daughter is a 10th grade student in the Savannah-Chatham County School District. I would like to thank the superintendent and the Board of Education for allowing me to present my concerns with the district's reopening plan for the 2020-2021 school year. First, in regard to the COVID-19 survey sent out after the initial shutdown, where are the results of the survey? Why are they not available to parents to review prior to this vote? Where are the results made available to the 110 members of the task force? What are the recommendations of the task force members individually? Are there other courses of action recommended by the task force for board consideration? Second, hazards of e-school for athletes, performing arts and special needs students? The American Academy of Pediatrics advocates that students be physically present in school provided as a link should you wish to review this document. As a parent, I perceive that the decline of social and communication skills in our youth today is due directly to the excessive use of social media and video games so prevalent in today's society. E-school reinforces this decline in communication skills degradation. Much of the learning of the arts and athletes is by hands-on, tactile or through example. A Zoom class does not provide the instructor or student with a 360-degree view of the environment or the big picture. Last, possible decline in performing arts and athletic programs with continued shutdown. For many children, the only exposure that they get to the performing arts, dance, music, singing, theater, is through their experiences at school. A continued shutdown of in-person instruction degrades skills and makes the acquisition of new skills difficult, if not impossible. This can snowball into school presentations and shows being of poor quality, thus bringing into question the necessity of the performing arts and art classes in the public school system. The same can be said of physical education and sport programs. Without these programs, many children do not have access to proper instruction and team-building examples. It is very difficult to teach the motion of throwing a curve ball by video. And then last, how will, how will or can our senior student athletes showcase their skills for college recruiters? After reviewing the information and videos available to me as a parent on the reopening plan for the school year, I believe we can do better. Per plan, and you'll have to forgive me, this is based upon what I saw last Friday, not what was presented at the meeting earlier. It was an all or nothing scenario. I wholeheartedly agree and support the stance of safety first for students, teachers and staff. My question is what is the threshold for transmission? Zero, 1%, 2%? Without a stated objective, we will continue to move the bar and wander aimlessly. In closing, my last remark is we are teaching our children an abject lesson of living in fear. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you very much for being here, sir. In the back of the room, before anyone else comes in, can you help us a minute? Sir, can you move that podium out into this room a little bit? It's echoing, it's echoing back in. Yeah, I think that works better. It did last time. And if you are, if, if the person is comfortable without speaking with their mask on, it would help us a lot, make sure we get it transcribed quick, but they don't have to take the mask off if they don't want to. Can you just ask them? He couldn't hear me. You didn't hear me? If, if. You got it? Welcome, Ms. McCoy.
Hi, Dr. Buck, how are you?
I'm good.
Hi. Before I start reading my prepared statement, I just want to say that several parents have contributed to this who were unable or didn't feel comfortable coming in person to speak.
Right. And you're speaking also from Ms. DiDonato also?
Well, I'm speaking one time. I've incorporated it all into my prepared statement.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Good afternoon, Dr. Levett and members of the Savannah-Chatham County Board of Education. Before I start, I would like to tell you that I appreciate how difficult the decisions you all have had to make over the last few months have been. I don't envy your positions and recognize that each decision comes with so many additional challenging decisions and preparations that would be overwhelming in the best of times. I also understand, especially in light of our governor's decision yesterday, that so many of us are trying to control an uncontrollable situation and are looking to our federal leaders, to our local leaders to make the brave decisions our state and federal leaders are refusing to make. I see you and I appreciate you all. I would like to point out that many of you are participating in this meeting from the safety of your homes. I know several parents who chose safety over civic duty today by staying home and I don't blame them at all. I wish we will, we were able to participate in the public comment section of this meeting via Zoom or telephone. While I very much appreciate your decision to begin this school year virtually, I urge you to give us a peace of mind to plan for more than two weeks at a time. Not knowing what the future will look like leads to significant anxiety as our lives since March have made plain. Planning for a full quarter or semester at a time will help families make future plans for childcare, work and transportation. I would like to see students in choice programs retain their seats past this school year while choosing what is best in the best interest for this school year. The added pressure of losing your child's enrollment in a school they worked hard to get into is an unnecessary burden at this time. Finding PPE, cleaning supplies, toilet paper, tissues, disinfectants and other items used for, for, I'm sorry, asked for on school supply list has been challenging. If we go back to in-person school, how will these items be supplied to faculty and staff if parents cannot find them? I know there's been a lot of debate about teachers working from school versus home. I ask you to allow them the flexibility to work from the safest place possible. I believe this will provide the easiest route to opening our schools in the future as it will permit them the ability to stay safe and healthy as our COVID positive numbers continue to increase rapidly. I would also, I also wonder how their own children will complete at-home instruction without their parents home to guide them. Will childcare centers provide this service? If they are able to teach from home and their children will be better prepared for, if they're able to teach from home, they and their children will be better able, better prepared for in-person learning when the time is right. The faculty, staff and students of our school district make up almost 15% of the population of Chatham County. We have an excellent opportunity to reduce community spread by decreasing in-person interactions by this population. Lastly, I would like to address the issue of special education and how we are meeting the needs of these students while they are at home. Throughout all of the planning, I have not heard anyone discussing how accommodations will be met. I look forward to seeing some guidance from the administration to parents on how to handle IEPs, therapies and when specialized instruction plans for SPED, ELL and gifted will be available. I truly believe we, if we can find a way to meaningfully service this population, it will help us better serve the entire population of students in Chatham County. Thank you again for being willing to make these hard decisions and being courageous and bold enough to prioritize students and staff health and safety.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Can you hear back there? Can you hear? I've always heard better than I'm hearing today. I don't know whether it's these things. I have to introduce first. Good afternoon, oh, that's, yeah. Could we ask them to speak really loudly? We're not able to hear up here.
Dr. Buck, it is loud and clear on our end.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Are you not able to hear, David?
Some can hear and some can't.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Good afternoon, sir. Welcome.
Greetings. Um.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, greetings. My name is Robert Richardson. Uh, I'm an 18-year-old, excuse me, 18-year veteran. I wish I was still 18. Uh, 18-year veteran of teaching. 13 of those years I have spent here in this awesome district at HBJ Jenkins. Go Warriors! Um, I actually kind of had to go back and rewrite everything that was a concern after watching the informal, uh, presentation.
Good.
And thank you because I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of teachers from my school. And obviously, our concern is safety. I'm not even going to touch on that because you guys have just done a great job. Your presentation is pretty, pretty interesting, too. Speaking is one that's fit with a lot of these PLCs. Um, I'm actually coming here, though, on something I haven't really heard addressed enough. And I represent still another portion of people at my school, the immunosuppressed teachers. Um, 18 years I've been teaching, 14 of those years I've been on dialysis. Uh, so I know that I've been able to juggle that, be able to be a full-time teacher. It's been, it's been challenging, but when you have a call and you want to make it happen. And, uh, I'm actually this close to transplant. I'm really excited. I think it would probably have already happened, but, you know, outside forces and all. Um, well, I'm not hearing enough of the support plan. All I'm really have been hearing so far is that we can either take FMLA leave, which I don't think is an option for a lot of us just because of the financial, financial side of it, or go into the virtual academy. If that is an option, obviously, I know myself and many of my other teachers, we'll do it. We got a new, we got to do. Part of the thing is being adaptable, especially in this particular time. But we've been talking and trying to figure out who is going to, I think I'm going to get in front of y'all. Um, it became very obvious going through this at my school, I quit counting when I hit 15. 15 teachers, 15 staff, 15 other educators, counselors, the janitorial staff, folks up front, that will be affected in some manner just because they hit the immunosuppress, they hit the main issues that you see for people being infected from Corona. So, yeah, you can send all of us to the virtual academy, but I just don't think that's the best possible answer. I think if you speak to the majority of us, every teacher you talk to, I know, wants to be in their classroom. And for the folks like myself, we want to be in our home schools. We know our kids, they know us, we know us, we know each other, we know that, we know the nooks and crannies. Now it's going to be sort of virtual, but. The point is, I think the effective use of our time would be finding a virtual way to use this at our home schools. Now, I'm a very firm believer that if you're going to come up and you're going to either criticize or if you're going to show a concern, you darn well better have some ideas to throw out, otherwise you're just one of those complaining teachers that there's lots of bumper stickers and coffee mugs for. Um, couple of really just quick ideas. Yeah, the biggest complaint I've gotten from my parents was last year they didn't feel like they'd got enough one-on-one instruction. I'll leave an address out there. Do you need a new program that you've got that's really going to help fix that? I'm actually excited. Uh, but why not use the virtual features that are have and be in our situation? In addition to, you know, doing some online instruction, tutor the kids that need help. I'm special ed. Obviously, I'm pretty, you know, using the co-teaching. Uh, you need me for anything with social studies and English, I am your man. You need me for biology and science, I'll be the better man for you. You know, I think that's where you hit teachers that are in my situation. Find those teachers out of the curriculum they know, let them be able to do one-on-one with those kids. I think that would really address that problem.
Thank you.
Um.
Getting close.
Okay, I'll wrap it up right here. Um, the other thing is use this to help convert or create curriculum. You know, we got to pop our pants down last semester. I think we did a remarkable job. I'm really proud of how everybody pulled together. But I know we all have habits that we didn't get a chance to use because we didn't have a chance to fix it. You know, use those teachers to help either convert curriculum they already have to be virtual or create more. Uh, at that point, I'm going to try and go out on a high note. Uh, I definitely want to say thank you very much. I want to offer my assistance in any way because, and I know there's several teachers that I work with that would also be willing to work, we're boots-on-the-ground teachers. We know what happens, we know how to implement this stuff. We want to be used. Um, I want to say thank you to you guys. I wouldn't be this positive to the school board a few years ago, but I hope you guys have our best interest, our students' best interest, everybody's, and I appreciate that. Y'all have a great day. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. I pray that that transplant comes through for you.
Well, same here. I actually had a really good, uh, meeting with Mayo Clinic, and I should be hearing something in a couple of weeks. They actually want to follow up with me. I'm on, uh, Facebook and Instagram, @yourkidneyparabi.
I will.
So, uh.
Thank you, sir.
Do a lot of fun stuff out there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Buck? Dr. Buck?
I know.
We getting, Dr. Buck?
He was too good.
We're getting echo issues since that got pulled out.
Oh, okay.
We're going to need to put it back.
Okay, but we can't hear back there for some reason. I don't know whether this is part of the problem. I, I didn't hear the first two speakers at all.
Okay.
I've already got my, yeah, I've got my sound off. I don't have it muted because I'm the one talking.
Understood.
Okay. Ms. Hines?
No, I was just going to say I, I could barely understand him.
I'm sorry.
He was breaking up. I don't know whether his, the mic was too loud or not, but I couldn't, I could barely hear him.
Okay, we're, we're having some problems. We're moving the.
Okay.
Turn again. Thank you.
All right, sure.
Good. Okay.
Thank you so much.
This, uh, this is hot. If you'd like, you can go ahead and take your mask off to speak. I've already sanitized it. And if you would avoid setting notes on.
I got you. All right. That, that line is hot.
Welcome, Mr. Patel.
Hi. Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Buck, Superintendent. My name is Lakeek Patel. I manage childcare centers in Georgia. I'm not here to make any recommendations to the board, but instead to, uh, share my personal story. I'm sorry. On March 16, I turned 26. That same day, I was faced with the same tough question you guys are faced with today. I had to make a decision on whether to continue my services at our childcare center or to suspend them. From March 16 to July 16, it's been four months. In this time, I have taken the care of 256 children, uh, along with 45 staff members. I'm proud to say, uh, that we have not had any positive cases at our centers. This isn't just because of the grace of God, but instead it's the policies that I've made in the days following March 16. Some of these policies can be also used in our K through 12 school systems. I have some of these things that we wrote down, um, maybe, um, consideration. We do temperature checks, uh, before the children are allowed to enter our school. Uh, I understand at the beginning it was very hard. My administration wasn't able to grasp why, but this allowed us to ensure that no sick children are allowed, uh, anybody that displayed a fever were not entered into our school. Uh, no outside visitors were allowed into our center without appointments. This greatly reduced the number of visitors throughout the day, also allowed our administration to stagger the visits. Lunches were given to our students inside the classroom, uh, and children were not allowed to leave, um, their classroom, other, uh, no transitions, basically. Uh, I understand these aren't all of the policy, um, changes that we can make, but we have to start somewhere. Uh, the sooner we start, the sooner we can start working out these kinks. As time progresses, our numbers of this virus will go up. As people return to a new normal, numbers will go up. This is the sad truth, but I ask you not to be afraid, but instead to tackle this head-on like we have for the last four months. You have the manpower, you have the resources, and I'm sure you can do it better than we can. Prevent as much as you can and react as fast as you can. I believe that children need to go back to school in person as soon as possible. Thank you.
All right. Okay. I have a couple of questions. I have a couple of questions about the, um, virtual learning. Are they going to be doing Zoom chatting with the children? Uh, why do the parents cannot provide, like, internet access or the facilities? Will y'all help provide them? Um, the food, like, um, there's some parents that cannot provide food for the kids. Are y'all funding, like, a razor for the food? That's really all my questions. Yes, sir. I did. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Buck, you're muted.
I know, but somebody's muting me. I'm not muting myself.
Okay. Just pointed out.
Thank you.
We need to get back in person and mute each other?
I've been, I've known a lot of people over the years that wanted to mute me.
Sir, part of the problem is when you're unmuted, there's an echo on the live feed. But if you could.
I know, but I'm also trying to watch my sound because if I turn my sound up where I can hear it, I'm echoing even when I'm not. Yeah, so. The speakers have actually been muted. The questions have.
Hi. I just want to address a few things because they only have five minutes. I'm going to get right to it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, I'm very looking forward to our children being in person whenever sooner the better, but that's all in their story because we all have preferences on why we choose in-person versus virtual. And the reality is, we're going to do virtual and it's happening. So my, my issue with this, and we all know that the spring virtual, we did the best that we could, or you guys did, but it didn't work. And so, virtual school's happening too, week, three weeks, or whatever. There needs to be accountability. If we're going to do school, let that school without the brick. Because I know elementary's different, but high school, middle school, my son's a junior, his schedule is advising at 7:40, he goes to 2:30. Teachers need to be accountable, students need to show up, they need to Zoom whether they're in their physical room or their home. But kids have classes, and if you have an 8 o'clock class, physics, English, art, the teacher needs to be available for that hour, hour and a half, however your school does it. If it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, physics, if it's at 10 o'clock, the teacher needs to Zoom, the teacher needs to have their kids for looking at it. They need to be accountable, students and teachers. Attendance need to be taken, teachers need to have tutorial, just like in the building. You pick your day. Because this one-on-one is not happening, or did not in the spring. So, and I'm not sure your thoughts on that, but if we're going to do school virtual, it needs to be real. It needs to be like we're in the classroom virtual. Teachers need to be there having their classes, students need to be there so they can see the students with them and at least interact. I know elementary's different, and I know between the Zooming, it can go crazy, and I know the wireless, some kids may not have it, which is going to be another issue, but that's another issue, different day. So I just think that's important, that virtual's being pushed for many reasons, and I agree to some extent. So when you're calculating on how you're doing it, and I hope you've been planning that this summer, but you, we, we've had time to think about this, the students and the teachers need to be able to see each other. I don't want to see your assignments due next week, so I'll see you then. Now, let's check back Friday and let's hope you got it. Because I'm not sure how my son's going to learn physics that way. It's just not going to happen. Some kids that might work for virtual reality was not my student's friend. So, uh, my big thing is that's where we're headed, so I'm hoping that it's a school with classes like a normal class day without the brick. And I think teachers need to have the tutorials, and I think the advisement needs to happen in the morning, and I think the counselors need to reach out versus email, text, Zoom to their students. Because it really didn't happen that much in the reality of the brick building, but I think they need it more so for parents. I'm fortunate, I don't have to work, so that's not an issue in my family, but it is. These students need their counselors to reach out. These students need to see their teachers in their classroom or their home saying, "We're there for you. We're 8 o'clock, show up or you get marked absent." So I think that's huge, and I hope you guys are considering that.
We're working on that right now. Thank you, ma'am.
You're working on what? The process?
We're working on the process. We're working on making virtual as close to being in the building as we can. If you want to watch the presentation that follows you speakers this afternoon, I think you'll get some answers that way also.
That's awesome. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dr. Buck?
Yes.
Do we have an updated list of presenters? I've heard two voices that I don't know who they are, and I really want to know, um, the constituents who are speaking. So the, the last two presenters didn't, um, tell us their names, and they're not on my list.
The one before was Natasha Williams.
Perfect.
And this was Delta Ward, W-A-R-D, that just spoke.
Thank you so much.
According to my list, we have four more. Okay, no, there are only two outside, so maybe we just have two.
Thank you.
teachers need to be able to see each other. I don't want to see your assignments due next week, so I'll see you then. Now let's check back Friday and let's hope you got it. Because I'm not sure how my son's going to learn physics that way. It's just not going to happen. Some kids that might work for virtual reality was not my student's friend. So I, my big thing is that's where we're headed. So I'm hoping that it's a school with classes like a normal class day without the brick. And I think teachers need to have the tutorials and I think the advisement needs to happen in the morning and I think the counselors need to reach out versus email, text, Zoom to their students because it really didn't happen that much in the reality of the brick building, but I think they need it more so for parents. I'm fortunate, I don't have to work, so that's not an issue in my family, but it is. These students need their counselors to reach out. These students need to see their teachers in their classroom or their home saying, "We're there for you. We're eight o'clock, show up or you get marked absent." So I think that's huge and I hope you guys are considering that.
We're working on that right now. Thank you, ma'am.
You're working on what, the process?
We're working on the process, we're working on making virtual as close to being in the building as we can. If you want to watch the presentation that follows you speakers this afternoon, I think you'll get some answers that way also.
That's awesome. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dr. Buck?
Yes.
Do we have an updated list of presenters? I've heard two voices that I don't know who they are and I really want to know, um, the constituents who are speaking. So the, the last two presenters didn't, um, tell us their names and they're not on my list.
The one before was Natasha Williams.
Perfect.
And this was Delta Ward, W A R D, that just spoke.
Thank you so much.
According to my list, we have four more. Um, okay, well, there are only two outside, so maybe we just have two.
Thank you.
Great. Run them. Get them on the treadmill, move them in. Welcome, ma'am. Could you give us your name, please?
Hi, my name is Devo. I work with Deep Center. I'm a program manager of systems involved youth.
Okay, great. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak today. Um, my concerns are mostly with how we plan on feeding our Title I youth. I know that we had a plan last year from March to June in which the school bus stops would be providing lunch and breakfast. Um, I'm curious to know if that is still the plan for this year, Monday through Friday for breakfast and lunch? And is there some type of plan or option to reallocate some of those funds so that youth and their families will be able to actually get maybe cash cards to be able to feed themselves as opposed to expecting a bus to bring a lunch to the bus stop? Um, that's one of my concerns. My other concern is that, um, not knowing whether or not the state has decided to continue with state testing, uh, and if they decided not to continue with state testing this year, how is that, how does that impact the curriculum for the year? And is that something that has been talked about or discussed at all, um, in terms of the social distancing plan?
Ma'am, if you will, um, without trying to answer every one of your questions, if you will watch the, the presentation right after the, the speakers speak right now, there are three more speakers after you. If you will watch that, that's being streamed and if you miss it, you can see it on, on our website, I think that will answer almost all of your questions.
Okay, and just out of curiosity, if I do have follow-up questions, is there a way that I can email somebody?
Yes, ma'am. If you would, uh, email the board office and we'll get you to the right people.
Okay, thank you.
And the board, uh, uh, email address is on the website.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we must get one.
Someone's been sanitized, you can speak with a mask on.
Speak with it on.
Okay.
Can you tell me your name, please, ma'am?
Yes, my name is Freedom Ali. Hello, thanks for hearing me.
Ms. Ali, we welcome you, we're glad you're here.
Thank you. Uh, my question is regarding the 10-day count in the beginning of the school year where they get to decide how many teachers each school gets according to how many school, uh, children log in within the first 10 days?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you be waiving that this year? Uh, because in case kids can't log in on time? I know normally that they do within the first 10 days according to how many students show up to school, they allocate how many teachers that school gets.
Uh, ma'am, I, I, that's a state issue, I believe.
Okay.
We don't have anything to do about whether we waive it or not.
Okay, so if kids aren't logged in within the first 10 days, that's it?
It could impact the district, right?
Uh, it can impact the, how many teachers they get.
Well, it impacts, it impacts the whole district because we get funded on the number of heads we have.
Okay, and that's not going to change this year? Something that we know of.
We have no information on that right now, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anyone else out there? Okay. Board members, thank you for your patience as we participate in government. Uh, I'm going to ask that we move forward now with the consideration of the, uh, resolution and we'll, before we consider the resolution, we're going to quickly run through the presentation again and then from there we'll discuss whatever you want to discuss and then move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. I will get ready to launch the presentation as requested and as I'm doing that, I will turn over the floor to our superintendent for some opening remarks.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for your patience. I do hope that you will find the presentation this afternoon to be helpful. Uh, while many of you are witnessing it for the second time, I'm sure there's questions about it, please know that it is, um, the plan is quite extensive and all the pieces of it will not be presented here today. There's some pieces still under development and will be shared in subsequent board meetings. So thank you for your patience. It does focus on safety first. Our goal is to open birthfully, um, with a plan to get face-to-face instruction safely. Uh, we are using the data to determine the change in our dates and instructional, instructional model. I'd like to thank our staff as well as our tech team, our board members, uh, task force members, all those persons who have contributed to the plan that you see here today. We think it is not a perfect plan, but it is a sound plan for, uh, serving students and it is a plan that also supports our staff. Uh, we'll begin now with a quick overview, um, from Mr. Hattiger. Thank you so much for your support and for your guidance.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, providing an update today on our reopening plan for school year 2020, 2021, uh, providing some additional awareness for our public today and much of this we talked about in our informal session today, but happy once again to provide some additional content, uh, this afternoon as we reiterate some of the key points that support our recommendation this afternoon for school opening. Uh, decision-making guidance, the district has utilized a number of sources for coming up with a determination of the recommendation for the beginning of the school year, uh, creates a, a wealth of information to lean on to make good quality decisions. This includes our principal and key element in our commitment to health and safety. Our CDC guidance has been instrumental. Key component for us obviously is local information and local data that we get from our health providers and health service, uh, workers. The, uh, Chatham Department of Health has been instrumental. We had information today from Dr. Davis that provided a clear understanding of where we are as far as transmission rates and the number of confirmed cases in our area. The district has also conducted a pilot program in a school summer camp, summer camp, school summer camp that was conducted at Gadsden Elementary in Formy, uh, the early learning center at Formy. We have a reopening task force and of course we've conducted surveys of our staff and of our families. Very quickly, we're going to share survey information that we have gained from our staff and from our family survey. Two separate surveys were deployed on separate dates. A staff survey was deployed June 24th through July 10th. We're still finalizing much of the data that was received from staff, the 3,500 respondents. There are some key points that we'll be able to share preliminarily with you in the following slides. We did finalize our survey of families readiness for returning to school. That was deployed June 14th through July 6th. Over 12,000 responded to that survey, a great response in that information. Important to note though, that the survey component of that date, uh, when it occurred and when it closed, as you compare that against the information that has been recently coming out in the past weeks regarding the spike of confirmed cases in our areas. Here we have Mr. Joe Austin, who's going to quickly provide some key points for you that we realized from the data that we've received and the surveys that were conducted. Uh, Mr. Austin, we'll be taking you through slides four through eight very quickly of the, uh, survey data and he will provide some key points that we have learned. Turning the floor over now to walk us through, uh, please, uh, listen to and, uh, more information provided from our, uh, Mr. Joe Austin of the Division of Data Accountability and Assessment.
Good afternoon, thank you very much.
Welcome.
So right now we're looking at the preferred reopening model, uh, and we can see, uh, that about 48% of our parents supported a reopening with either a virtual learning model or a hybrid, uh, model. About 41% supported the face-to-face, um, return to school model and about 10% remained undecided. Uh, with our staff survey, we did have a clear majority of 65% favoring either a virtual or hybrid learning model and only 26% favoring a face-to-face model. Next slide, please. Now here we are looking at the reasons for the selection of a particular instructional model. So with both, um, the family and the, the staff surveys, uh, most respondents, uh, indicated that they had health and safety concerns for the reason why they selected a particular instructional model. Now for those, uh, that chose a full-time return to school model, uh, the reasons for their choice, uh, were primarily personal preference or student choice. That's an important statistical correlation. Next slide, please. Now on this slide, we're looking at employee comfort and returning to the worksite. Uh, I want to draw your attention to the left, to the, the pie chart, and here we're split pretty much down the middle. Uh, we see that about 50% of our staff indicated that they're either very comfortable or somewhat comfortable with returning to the worksite. Uh, the other half has indicated that they are somewhat uncomfortable or very uncomfortable with returning to the worksite. Indicators of, of, uh, staff comfort include, um, you know, primarily, um, the sanitation of, uh, of work facilities, um, and also knowing that there's a protocol in place if a student or employee gets sick. Next slide, please. Now we're looking at the, the start dates, uh, again, drawing your attention to, to the pie charts. In both the, um, the family and the, the staff surveys, um, it indicates that both, uh, family and staff prefer some kind of delayed start date, uh, after Labor Day being the most popular choice. Next slide, please. And that brings us to our concerns for reopening. Uh, both staff, um, and parents indicated that, uh, that catching or spreading of the virus, uh, not being able to properly social distance, um, and workplace cleanliness were among their reopening concerns. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. It is great to be able to have data that we have received and a, a great response from those over 12,000, as we said, from parents, 3,500 from staff. And that data certainly, uh, important part of our considerations as we go through our guidelines for coming to recommendations. One of the things we also mentioned was our task force. Task force had many topics that were considered, number of functional breakouts. This brought together a wide range of individuals from nonprofits to faith-based to, uh, military, our parents, PTA and business leadership, engaged with staff and administration, and we participated in three virtual meetings, as you can see, that are shown on your screen to provide good dialogue, input and understanding of the many components that we had to consider in our final, uh, work to come to a recommendation for school opening. Some of the common themes after all the meetings were held are in front of you. The, it was clear that the task force had favored a delayed start, delayed start of some sort, either a two-week or after Labor Day. And also the understanding that a virtual or hybrid instruction model would be necessary. We did not see strong or any themes come out that said face-to-face must occur. Virtual was the most popular through the task force. The Georgia Department of Education also provided guidance for all of Georgia schools. We did utilize that as an extensive document, provides recommendations. It's done in a way that reminds district leadership to rely on the local data and the information that you're getting in your local communities from your health professionals. We also recognize that what you see on the screen was released on June 1st, has since been updated on July 13th, uh, but it does provide a guide rails for us for making determination based on the amount of spread and transmission that's going on in any given community. Today we did hear from Dr. Davis during our informal session, very instrumental in providing daily updates to the superintendent and staff regarding transmission rates here in Chatham County, the number of confirmed cases as well. Important to note that back in June, when we had our last board meeting on June 3rd, there were 587 confirmed cases in Chatham County. As of July 15th, yesterday evening, there were 2,905. Today, July 16th, there's even more. It's undeniable that the number of confirmed cases in our area is on a steady rise upward. What does that mean? That has an input and a deep influence and in, uh, and as we take input from our leadership across the health realm, it has great impact on what we're looking to do in far as coming forward with a recommendation for school start. It helps to lay it out in a simple model where, where are your transmission levels and what would the associated learning model recommendation be in that given scenario? Of course, we have decision supports that we've relied on. We provided guidelines earlier, the task force survey, data received, and of course, uh, transmission levels. It's important to remember that the health conditions are assessed regularly and that staff are maintaining constant contact with health officials. As an administration, uh, the focus in supporting safety, health and wellness will continue with, uh, having the appropriate learning model, which of course will be subject to change based on existing conditions as we look at transmission levels and the rates of spread in any given community. So that leads us to our recommendation that you have today as an agenda item for action, uh, from the board, which falls into the realm of the academic school year calendar. The recommendation is to delay school by two weeks, which would put us in an August 19th start date and begin our learning model with an e-learning, virtual learning scenario. Part of the delay, which is very critical for us in the two-week delay, is it provides an extended staff professional learning time so that we can get training done and get some enhancements for our staff so that they're utilizing some of the new tools that you're going to hear about in this presentation to enhance the virtual learning experience for our students across Chatham County. Of course, the model as we indicated is subject to change and should health conditions dictate, the virtual learning model could potentially extend further into the school year as we all watch very closely as to what the transmission rates and the number of confirmed cases are in our county. Number of divisions across the district that make up the operation of our school system from academics to operations to technology, HR, uh, today you're going to hear from those folks. Right now I'm going to turn over the presentation to our academic affairs team to talk to you about some of the plans that they have, some of the plans that the district has for ensuring that we have a successful launch of e-learning in a virtual learning scenario when we return to burn and log on on October, on August 19th, sorry, on August the 19th for the calendar and getting back to scenario of learning. So I will turn the floor over to our associate superintendents, Dr. Valerie Cave, Ms. Bernadette Ball Oliver, Dr. Kimberly Hancock, and Ms. Kay Akins. You have the floor.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much, Mr. Hattiger. We are so excited to have the opportunity to demonstrate to you our improved teaching and learning plan. Now that we're going back with the virtual instructional model, planning to do that, we have purchased a learning management system. Uh, we're excited to be able to launch that learning management system this year. Our purchase is so very timely because the learning management platform provides our teachers to have, um, on-time, real teaching and learning. It provides anytime, anywhere, any kind of device, so teachers can click less, they can teach more, and they can do it with a lot of ease. It also saves time and it's very interactive for our students, our parents, as well as our staff. It's packed with over eight million resources for our children and our teachers and families to engage with. Our focused curriculum is all about implementing with the guidance that comes from our all about implementing with the guidance that comes from our learning recovery plan. Our Learn Recovery Plan is has been carefully, especially designed to encompass all of the instructional strategies as well as our, excuse me, our delivery models. It's based on a pre-K through five approach, a six-eight approach, as well as a nine-12 approach to teaching and learning. So we did a good job last year when we suddenly transitioned to our remote and ready. But this time, we are really prepared to do a great job with teaching and learning. So stay tuned for more. We're ready now.
Thank you, Dr. Kay. The specialized instruction plan will provide continuous services to our students with disabilities, our ELL, and our gifted students. The plan is built with flexibility and will provide a range of resources which allow teachers to collaborate on student learning activities based on their individual needs. The district's commitment to providing a free, appropriate public education to our students with disabilities continues. Our ELL students will continue to be provided instruction to increase achievement and English proficiency, and our gifted students will continue to receive education through the approved Georgia Department of Education models. Please move to the next slide.
Thank you, Dr. Hancock. We are very pleased to share our expanded professional learning plan for the upcoming school year. We all understand that this will be a very important component to our employees returning back to school. First, our social, emotional well-being training will be conducted by our guidance counselors. Of course, we'll have training for the IT'S Learning, Learning Management System for teachers, administrators, district-level administrators, and substitute teachers. We will have our return to work protocol led by human resources, our COVID Response Team training led by campus police, and of course, best practices for teaching virtually through our Middle Georgia RISA. I'm very pleased to announce our very first virtual new teacher orientation, also known as SOFI, and that will be held on July 27th and the 28th. We are very excited to welcome our new teachers aboard and we look forward to sharing all the good things going on in Savannah-Chatham during our first virtual SOFI. We also want to share more about our Independent Learning Days Playbook. We know that our teachers did really well in making the shift during the spring, but we also know that we have to beef up and improve and have a more robust plan as we open school this year. We have an Independent Learning Days Playbook, which really is our virtual plan. It addresses pre-K through 12, and it really does encompass those specific guidances that are needed for our administrators, our instructional support staff, and our teachers. The virtual playbook is our operational manual. It's going to include schedules for students and for teachers, and it's also going to address some of the concerns that we heard this afternoon around direct instruction, around being online, around attendance, and that whole teaching and learning piece and what is and is not appropriate, as well as the platforms that will be used to provide instruction like Zoom and Google Suite. It's going to give our teachers more guidance and it's going to put to use some of all of that training that they will receive to prepare them for being online. Also, we understand it's important that we still have our open houses so that we welcome our families back, and we understand it will be different. So we will conduct virtual open houses so that they are welcomed back to the school system. And we do not want to forget about those transition grades, fifth to sixth and eighth to ninth. Our schools are going to be working to develop transition plans so that those students are welcomed into their new school environments. We are not going to forget about the importance of that. We continue to work around our athletics, band, and cheerleading plans that we've already put in place. We have guidance documents that are supporting our coaches and our band directors in all of those areas. And GHSA drives our athletics. Our band and our cheerleading also operate under those same guidance documents. While they may not operate under GHSA, we have found that the documents we developed are really strong and they provide safety guidance for our students. So we're utilizing them and pieces from them to support our students in all of those areas. One is that just recently, GHSA has released guidance around wearing helmets that that can begin on Monday, July 20th. So additional information will be coming. One key component of that is, is that we do not allow our students to engage in any type of practice or participation until we've made sure that we have provided our coaches with guidance and with training. So we've worked really hard to ensure that our coaches and our teachers and our administrators have the support that they're needed. I'm going to also turn it over to Dr. Hancock now, who will explain the last two bullets for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ball Oliver. We know that it's been a challenging time. It's been challenging for our parents. It's been challenging for our students, and it's been challenging for our staff. And knowing that, we realize the needs for more social, emotional support than we've ever had before. It will be a major component of our new plan. School social workers and counselors will provide ongoing social, emotional resources to students, staff, as well as our parents. A virtual counseling toolkit has been created to assist with the much-needed resources. Our wraparound services that have gone on for the last year will continue for students, with staff, and our community partners. We will have a parent guidance toolkit on the Savannah-Chatham County Public website to assist parents with all things learning in Savannah-Chatham County Public Schools. And at this time, our presentation from Academic Affairs concludes.
Thank you to our associate superintendents for that academic reopening plan update. Moving along our presentation to our Human Resources Division, please turn your attention to the screen for information on human resources and staffing being brought to you by our Chief Human Resources Officer, Mr. Ramon Ray.
Yes, good evening, afternoon. I wanted to talk a little bit about employees returning to work. I know employees have anxiety and have been away a long time. We have had about one-fifth of our workforce. That has always worked for the most part since we since March 13th. But certainly, we understand the anxiety of those that are coming back. We want to make sure it's a safe environment. We want to make sure that when we do come back face-to-face, that we have the protocols and the guidelines related to that. Masks currently are a requirement for all SECPSs employees that come into any building. That's a requirement that we have along with face shields, and we do obviously look at ADA accommodations that are needed. We do symptom monitoring checks in every building, and that will continue to go forward. We certainly, as a first step, we want employees to understand that this starts at home. This starts with every employee taking responsibility, making sure that they are healthy to be able to return to come into work. So it's before we even get to a monitoring system at any physical building, any school, every employee has a responsibility to check in their own symptoms before they come into work. We will have isolation rooms that are going to be needed in every building. So we're assessing those as this presentation is going on, and we will have more information on each building and what each building needs in the near future. Workplace etiquette and hygiene has been mentioned earlier, but we need to make sure that everybody understands the protocols of social distancing, making sure you're washing your hands for at least 20 seconds with open water, making sure that you are doing those things to keep your area sanitized. Again, it's back to, yes, we have custodians, yes, we have others, but this is a total, this is a total group effort as far as all employees in the district taking part into making sure that all the areas are clean as well. Meeting expectation, we have a different expectation for being able to meet in rooms, and so room capacities have been lowered to 25%. And we really discourage face-to-face meetings except when absolutely necessary. But that's kind of what we're doing to make sure we are mitigating the spread or possibility of the spread of the virus within our work community. Those are some of the steps that we are taking. Kirk, go to the next slide. Staffing, hiring procedures. We have been hiring since March 13th. So although the district shut down, although many things happened, we went virtually, we also went virtually interviewing. And I commend all of our principals and administrators for doing all the hiring that we needed, that was necessary to fill our positions virtually. So that is something that they, you know, they immediately when they needed to, they jumped in, and we were able to do that. So that continues to be what we do now when we need to fill positions. There are some staffing needs that we may have. We are still trying to finish staff to virtual school. Most of our other schools are pretty well-staffed, so we will just continue down that process. As Dr. Hancock mentioned on the related on the student side, on the employee side, we want to make sure employees understand that their their well-being, their mental and emotional well-being is something that we want to make sure that they are aware of. The Employee Assistance Program is available to all employees. We notice a stressful time, so we want to make sure that all employees are aware of that resource that they may need. And that would be something that will be helpful for them to be able to transition back whenever that is. Whenever we end up back face-to-face, that'll be something that we have along with the guidelines and the procedures for physically being at work and those other aspects and steps that we will have. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Moving along in our presentation, providing you an update from the Division of Operations. Please welcome your Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Vanessa Miller Cagler.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on behalf of the Operations Division. Specifically, you see before you our plans for building access. As you can imagine, as we continue to see our numbers increase, our buildings remain close at this time, and we'll be open for staff as determined necessary to ensure that items and resources that are needed, staff will have an opportunity to retrieve those items on a scheduled basis. I will continue to evaluate opportunities for staff to access buildings and using our building resources as determined. Sanitation is important to see some of the signs that are already in place throughout the district, not only in school buildings, but all of the operated buildings across the district. Personal protection equipment is vital, along with hygiene supplies. Kirk, you can go to the next slide. We have ample supply on hand to make sure that we're doing our part to help mitigate the spread of the virus. We've already installed hand sanitizing stations throughout the buildings, both school buildings, district buildings, cafeterias, as well as school buses. Physical markers and barriers are being installed. Over 50% have already been installed in schools. If you have an opportunity to visit central offices, some of our other buildings, you'll have an opportunity to see what directional signs are in place. Kirk, next slide. Again, the sanitation hygiene. We're working to modify the filters we're currently using across the district. That is one of the projects we're undertaking right now to make sure that we're ensuring ventilation in the building. We're running our systems around the clock to ensure that there is proper airflow. When we're using our buses, you'll see whenever the weather permit, we will have buses with the windows down as another effort to mitigate the spread. Staff has received in-depth training as relates to the new cleaning equipment. Cleaning schedules will be modified. They are modified now for those buildings that are open to ensure that we are cleaning all of what we refer to as those high-touch, high-point areas in the building. And as it relates to our feeding program, on day one, we will continue to serve our students across the district as we did during the shelter-in-place model. All of our buses are fully equipped. Our staff again will be trained on the proper use of personal protection equipment while serving meals to our students in a virtual model. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller Cagler, for that update from the Operations Division. Moving on in our presentation today, we'd like to provide you an update on our work in the realm of technology as we prepare for day one. Please welcome your Chief Data Assessment and Accountability Officer, Mr. David Feliciano.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk Hetegar. Good afternoon, everyone. On the learning management system, a five-year contract has been finalized and approved with its learning. We are on a two-month aggressive deployment plan. Technical configuration and integration is currently being worked on. Training for administrators will occur during the last week of July, with teacher training starting August 4th, where they will learn to build their units and integrate their existing digital resources. On student learning devices, this month, we will start to dismantle the rest of the school's cowl to prepare for school device distribution. Over 14,000 have been ordered, and we have to switch brands in order to receive them around mid-August. Hopefully, moving forward, the supply chains will be okay. These devices will be inventoried and distributed to the schools with the assistance of the Operations Division, who will also be recalling grades five and eight devices from students that have transitioned to the next school. In addition, our graduating senior student devices have been returned and have been sanitized. It will be checked into our inventory system and reissued. Concerning hotspots, personal portable wireless internet access devices is a topic of concern, not only locally, but across Georgia and the nation. This is an area of need, and we are exploring several viable solutions to support the teaching and learning environment outside of the classroom. Next slide, please. The LMS is something we did not have in place during school year 2020. The Learning Management System is an enterprise solution that provides accountability, structure, and consistency for online and classroom teaching and learning. Web port access will be provided to administrators, teachers, students, and parents. The LMS provides a smartphone app with access to the entire platform to include courses, activities, quizzes, exams, grades, discussion boards, emails, and calendar with due dates and events. Another enterprise the district has purchased is Ingenuity for an instructional online solution. It brings Georgia standard-aligned digital core content for grades six through 12. Ingenuity also provides Odysseyware designed for grades five and below. The E-Academy will use Odysseyware for their lower grades as an instructional resource. Our existing formative assessment tool MAP will be used to measure learning loss and assist with student support and learning recovery. On our one-to-one student device, in summary, 7,000 Chromebooks have been deployed. 2,500 Chromebooks are ready for deployment along with existing school student devices. 400 Chrome, 400 Chromebooks were purchased with community donations. We certainly want to thank our community partners for assisting us with this critical and immediate need. Onto smart buses. As part of our solution to support students outside of the classroom, we are deploying 10 smart buses throughout Chatham County. We expect the equipment to arrive this month. We also have applied for 30 additional smart buses through the Georgia K-12 Student Connectivity Grant. The State Department of Education expects delivery to districts to occur around mid-August. On the smart bus deployment, we will be publishing hours of operation and locations on our public website. Concerning hotspots and high-speed internet, personal portable wireless internet access devices, 60 devices will be deployed to high schools, and just over 250 devices will be ordered through the SIG grant for seven schools. The seven schools are Hubert, Mercer, Myers, School of Humanities at Low, Duran, Schuman, School of Liberal Studies at Savannah High. We will also continue to promote affordable high-speed internet at home through providers such as Comcast Internet Essentials, T-Mobile, and AT&amp;T. We will also publish resources on free Wi-Fi connectivity on our public website. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Feliciano. And as we round out today's presentation on our plans for reopening, the communications team is deeply involved with all divisions across the district. And as you could hear, there are many narratives across the work that we're doing for reopening, where we will be developing individual campaigns on, posting information to our website, we're sharing it across our social media platforms. We want to remind all of our viewers out there, our families. We want to remind all of our viewers out there, our families, community at large, you're looking for accurate, reliable information, the place to go to find it regarding the school district is our website, SCCPSS.com is your one-stop shop for informational needs. We will be dedicating a webpage for reopening information. In fact, the communications team is working on that, has been working on that, and will have information set to launch for this evening. In fact, we will reiterate any action items that occur today during today's meetings that input, or that have input and impact on our operations, and you'll be able to find that at SCCPSS.com. Obviously, social media has been a wonderful tool for us. We've been able to exponentially expand these number of followers that we have and the number of reach that we have in our market and across the community at large and with our families and staff as well. We're looking at doing additional information across social media in a creative way. It provides additional avenue for ways to engage with the audience, provide information, and also gain feedback and input as well. So, learning model resources about some of the things that you heard today for the virtual reopening, when we get back to learning. Of course, the academic calendar, very important on the final action of the board. We will be promoting that across the website and social media with whatever action may take place today. And of course, how parents can have a positive experience with their children in a return-to-learn virtual format, creating an FAQs document. We know there are a lot of questions, questions about what virtual learning looks like. That is under development, and you will be able to find it across our social media and of course, on our website as well. Done a lot of video production. If you've been following our Twitter feeds or Facebook or checking out our website, hopefully you've been at an opportunity to view the Free Talk Fridays. This is direct talk, open talk, information direct from the administration, direct from the superintendent. It's been something that the superintendent is committed to in creating direct lines of communication and frequent updates. Superintendent is very engaged and willing to engage with individuals and share information, not only from the community at large, but directly to our parents and directly to our staff as well. One of the ways we do that is through the Free Talk Friday video recordings. We continue to share information also on Comcast's Channel 195. That will remain a critical tool for us as we get into the virtual reopening. Plans are to continue to provide additional supplemental lessons that can assist parents should they need to. You can watch it on Channel 195. And also, we will be posting that information to our YouTube channel, where you can log on at any time and find clarifications or additional information that is supplemental to the robust learning that you'll be getting through the virtual format that will begin when we get back to school. Of course, professional learning is critical. We talked about that earlier and in many scenarios from HR into the academic team and the learning that we need to do to get ready for day one, from new work protocols and guidelines, to new safety protocols and procedures, to professional learning as it relates to the Learning Management System and all the technology tools that you heard Mr. Feliciano enumerate in his presentation. We will be providing professional learning support, video production. It's very important that we're able to broadcast to our staff in a safe way, but more importantly, to record that information so that they can go back and look at it at their leisure or get clarifying information that they may need. And of course, as I mentioned, the Learning Management System, this is something we did not have on March 13th, when we broke for spring break, and that never came back to face-to-face learning. Learning Management System is going to be a very critical component to our platform for ensuring that we have a robust and quality learning experience and learning platform in a virtual format for all of our students across Chatham County. So, communications is going to be very busy. We remain busy. We've done a lot of new and exciting things across the realm of communication since we broke in the, in this pandemic, and we are going to continue to do that and stay at the forefront of sharing information with our community at large. So that does complete the presentation today. I will throw the opportunity for final closing remarks back to our superintendent. If she would like to provide any final information that we may not have touched on before there's any discussion with the board. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hetegar, and thank you to the staff for presenting the information again. We encourage those who may have missed a fuller presentation to our website so that you can see the presentation that was provided this morning during our informal session. I do want to add that we will also be providing training for our substitute teachers and other substitute workers, so that they're all operating off of the same page. There is a lot of information here. We invite you to continue to engage with us as we make changes along the way. Staff will receive their return to work notice in the next few days. Lots of work has been done, lots of work still to do. Not a perfect plan for everyone, but it's a solid plan. More details to come. Safety first, loves win, love wins. Thank you so much for your support. We look forward to responding to any questions the board might have.
Thank you, Dr. Levitt. Mr. Hetegar, would you read the resolution so that we could move on to questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Board President, Madam Superintendent, Board Officers, members of the Board of Public Education. We do have a recommendation for the board's action. This is board agenda item under our regular board meeting today, July 16, 2020, for a modification to the academic calendar for school year 2020-2021. Based on the unprecedented impacts of COVID-19, the increasing amount of confirmed cases in Chatham County, and the high rate of transmission shown on the 14-day community spread index in our area, the district seeks to delay the start of the 2020-2021 school year by two weeks for the first day of instruction occurring on Wednesday, August 19, 2020. The delay supports the district's goal to ensure student and staff safety in a manner that mitigates exposure during a period of high transmission. A delay will also provide critical time for staff training and preparation for a return to teaching and learning, the implementation of new safety procedures, and preparation to ensure facilities are ready for social distancing protocols. Under the Strategic Waiver School System contract, the district is authorized to make calendar modifications with board approval that deviate from existing State Board of Education rules for the school year, and it is further supported by resolution of the State Board of Education as authorized under OCGA 20-2-168C2 to depart from the strict interpretation of the terms of school year and school day. Calendar has been reviewed by administration and provides the following school year 2020-2021 calendar modifications. Offers 170 days of instruction, provides 12 days of pre-planning and training before the first day of instruction, begins the school year on August 19, 2020, begins the school year in a virtual e-learning district-wide model, adds two staff planning days for teachers at the end of the school year, includes the strategic use of district-wide e-learning days on November 3rd, which is the 2020 Election Day, and of course, many of our school sites are used as polling sites, also at the start of the second semester and after St. Patrick's Day. Thus, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the board approve the modifications to the 2020-2021 academic school calendar in support of mitigation efforts that limit the potential for exposure to the COVID-19 virus during a time of increased community spread, and that allows additional staff preparation time for a safe return to teaching and learning.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there motion to that effect? Dr. Coskins Brown moves. Ms. Hall seconds. Dr. Coskins Brown. Anything?
Yes, I just want to thank the superintendent and the staff for the information and all the work that went into this plan. It clearly took a lot of work. It took the 135 members of the task force who all contributed, and I just want them to know that no bit of information is unused or unneeded in what's been put together. This is a very well-developed plan, as the superintendent said, that is not perfect, but it, it shows an extraordinary amount of consideration, and I'm looking forward to the, the comments of my colleagues.
Ms. Hall, anything?
I just want to say to our public that every one of us on the board has taken a lot of time to consider all of the information that we have received, both here locally, nationally, about this pandemic. And I fully support going forward with the recommendations made today, hoping, of course, that as soon as possible, we will be able to return to our in-person learning. But we thank everybody on the staff, Dr. Levitt, your entire cabinet, everyone who has helped us get to this point.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Other board members. Ms. Wade?
Ugh, cannot believe we're here, y'all. The last place we wanted to be in March. Regretfully, I support the decision to return to virtual school learning for now. I think it is the first step in a slow move to return to school. As a parent, as a very well-informed parent, I was prepared to send my children back to school, and I think it can be done safely. However, as a board member, we are not there as a district or as a community, and there is no Plan B. This has been presented to us as the only option. I know that everyone has worked incredibly hard. 208 has been open for business all along, and I know everyone's worked incredibly hard and considered everything, and it's a no-win situation. I really appreciate Dr. Davis providing us with a lot of information this morning. I think it's really good to be working hand-in-hand with the Public Health Department, and he answered our questions, and I really appreciate that and for him sharing his time with that. What we have learned is that everyone has an opinion, and we've all become little mini epidemiology experts. Overall, the community input, as you saw from the emails you received, is very divided. Counted them up, and my emails' pro and con were equal. There are thorough, reasonable input from both sides. We had physicians and pediatricians and other healthcare workers supporting in-person instruction. Many, many teachers want to come back and are, and do not want to see us start virtually. They've asked and almost begged for us to return to school. Most national organizations, both in the healthcare field and in the education field, support returning to in-person learning, and I think our main goal is how we get back to that as soon as possible. The reality is, most people are no longer completely isolating. People have expanded their quarantine bubble, and most people have returned to in-person work environments. The reality is, many never left in-person work environments. 208 has been open for meetings, and office is full, and people are working there. Children throughout the community are participating in camps and sports. Drive by Daphen Park in the afternoon, and you'll see football and soccer practice. Many of our schools are having athletic conditioning. You can come to school for sports, but not learning. Our community does not look like it did in March, and our schools should not either. With proper safety measures, we can keep people safe. With that, I want to talk about, first, online learning, and second, the slow transition back to school. Online learning. While some people had positive experiences in the spring, most people that I've heard from did not, and I have shared with y'all my own family's real challenges with it. We did not hear from 250 middle school students from the moment we switched to online learning. 250 students in middle school never tuned in. Kids are not just slipping through the cracks, they are plummeting through the cracks. I know the superintendent is committed to making the online learning experience better this fall, but I have some suggestions and expectations. Like the parent that spoke to us earlier, we need to have a full-scheduled, regular school day. Kids need to wake up, they need to log on, they need to have the principal greeting them, and they need to start class. I've shared with you that my sister in Atlanta Public Schools, when they transitioned to virtual, they were on school on a Friday. Monday, they were online. At 8:30, the entire school was logging on, the principal was greeting them, and they had a full school day. We have got to replicate the school and the online learning, and it must be mandatory. We can't have pre-recorded videos or links with assignments as a substitute for teaching. We need actual instruction. There are tons of opportunities online to interaction. You can do live polls, you can do student presentations, group projects, but we've got to equip our teachers to be able to teach online and engage our students. I'd even consider optional outdoor opportunities for class meetups, such as a park or a playground, so that we can recreate the classroom in a safe environment. Today's report has no details on online learning, and the meat is what the parents in our community are really craving. Parents need this information as soon as possible to plan and prepare. Even I on the board don't really know what this online learning management system means. Does that mean everyone's logging on in the same way? Are we still going to have Zoom and Google Classroom or all these different things? So we need to know what it looks like day to day. I know a lot of people are looking at private school who say they will open. That's disappointing because we've worked so hard to bring more people into the public school system. The sooner we can get these details out, the better. I was hoping for that information today. I can't say I'm super excited for the online platform. I also think we'll be able to use it during hurricane season this fall, unfortunately. For those parents who do not, they want their children isolated at home in the absence of school, here is what is happening throughout our community. Informal mini classrooms are popping up throughout the county, with parents coordinating online learning together to create social interaction for kids, structures for families, and relief for parents. I am already a part of a group of six moms doing that for sixth grade. Faith-based and nonprofit communities are working together to create online learning environments for kids. But think about what that means. Tons of resources and human capital throughout our community are being spent to create mini learning environments, while schools where kids should be remain closed. It's good that everyone's coming together to create these environments, but it really should be happening in the schools. As we move forward, here are my priorities. Our buildings should not be shuttered. We need our schools open. We need staff in the schools, teachers in the classrooms. That is the critical first step to reopening. This creates reliable technology for teachers. There were lots of teachers in the fall or the spring who had trouble logging in, who didn't have computers, had weak Wi-Fi, it was too windy, and so the Wi-Fi didn't work, and they couldn't have their weekly, daily Zoom. Once we get teachers back in the classroom, we can see how it looks to come to work every day, which most of us are doing anyway, and that, you know, you come in with your mask, and you get your hand sanitizer, and you go into your classroom and you're socially distanced, which is very easy to do in your classroom. I'd even like to have a time where parents can, can schedule a time to come to the media center and check out a book with their child. Make the school nurse available. School buildings should be open for business, even if kids are learning from home, regulated, controlled, safe, but open and accessible. Safety can be done if we follow the CDC guidelines. We've had this chart, I love this chart, which says everyone's concerns. Most of these, we can easily do, so we can address most of the teachers' concerns and make our schools safe and bring them back. I know we hear a lot about childcare for our teachers, and I get it. As a working mom, I'm sympathetic and I understand the challenges. Many parents continued to work throughout the shutdown, and they've been dealing with the same issue of childcare since March. Now, we could have a greater discussion on why working moms have had the greatest burden in this pandemic, why our female teachers say they need to stay home to care for their children, but their spouses do not, why our society does not seem to recognize the critical need for accessible childcare regardless of a pandemic, and how childcare disproportionately impacts women. What I do know is that working moms are the most resourceful people around. They're creative and resourceful, and they can get it done. Have no problem with teachers bringing children into schools if that's managed. Hopefully, if you have, if you're a teacher and you have a second grader, your second grader's online learning is so robust and good that they're able to sit in your classroom while you're teaching 11th grade physics. So if we can master online learning, get everyone on the same schedule, it can support everyone. Regarding our return to school, I think there is no way that after Labor Day, we are bringing 37,000 children back into the school system. I just don't think that's realistic. Today, we heard that the index is at 536, and that it really needs to be below 100. It's based on a 14-day average, and we still have July 4th and the Labor Day spikes. So I think while this calendar only goes up to Labor Day, I think it's really unrealistic to think that we would not be back until Labor Day. What I would like to see is a push to bring our pre-K and kindergarten kids back after Labor Day, and maybe even first and second grade. The superintendent has acknowledged, and the state has acknowledged, that these children do not do well at all in online learning. Our online learning academy was only approved for third through 12th grade, so I would like to see at least our pre-K and kid, K kids come back in Labor Day and make a real commitment to get those kids back in the school. We can use our larger spaces like our cafeterias and our gyms for social distancing. The rate of transmission is the lowest among our younger kids. It can still be voluntary. We can still offer an online option, but I think it's critical that we get these little people back in school as soon as possible. Second, I would make SED and ESOL students the second priority. I'd even consider opening Georgia Coastal Comprehensive. These children, both SED and ESOL, do not do well on an online learning platform, and it's critical that we get them in. I haven't heard much about IEPs and 504s today. We know it looks different in the pandemic, but I think if we can get these kids back in school, even if it's just one day a week or for an hour a day or something, it's really, really critical to get those kids back in. Again, it would be controlled, regulated by appointment, but acknowledging that those children benefit. but acknowledging that those children benefit from being in the school building. And then finally, I think it's a priority to get our sixth graders and our ninth graders back to school, because those are the children transitioning to new schools. That's where that school community is created, and that's really what is, what is lost, I think significantly for those kids. Finally, I think this board needs to get back to being in person. The county commission has been back in person for over a month. The city hosted a hearing and a meeting this week that I attended. I think we need to lead by example. If we're asking people to come back in the school buildings, we need to show up for our meeting in person. It can be done safely with the panels, with the masks, with social distancing, and we need to be back and lead by example. So those are my comments on this. I do hope we soon hear a lot more about what online learning looks like, and I hope we're really creative in our outreach. I'm worried about those 250 middle school kids that we never heard from. How do we get to them? How do we tell them what's going on? I think we can lean on our outreach teams and our nonprofits who are serving those communities to get the word out. But I look forward to the first day of school and all the back-to-school pictures on August 19th, and I hope that we can slowly push these, particularly the more vulnerable populations, back into the school buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. I have Ms. Hall and Mr. Johnson.
I just wanted to comment, Dr. Buck, that I think we should have had some protocol. If I had realized that each of us would have this kind of time, we each would have had our thesis ready, you know, and taken the time to explain to our public why we plan to vote the way we do. So I think in the future, when it's something like this, if that's the protocol, that we all need to be aware of it, and rather than trying to be brief, we get a chance to say to the world what our thoughts are.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Ms. Johnson, Mr. Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're at a pivotal moment in history of public education in our country, state, county. At this point, we could probably all write a dissertation on COVID-19 with the daily information we have received over the past four months. Like many other citizens of Chatham County have reached out to me and the rest of the board, I personally know people who have had the virus. Some have been worse off than others. I am thankful that each of them have been in full recovery or is on the road to recovery. I would like to thank the work of the task force that has done the thoughtfulness for the reopening plan. What needs to be said, I am tired of people in the public, pundits on TV, and elected officials from Washington to Bay Street saying they know best. I also find it laughable when any of these elected officials say not to play politics when someone disagrees with them. Both parties have turned COVID-19 into political football to score political points with their face. We, the School Board for Public Education for the City of Savannah and the County of Chatham, are voted in as nonpartisan elected officials. I say we act as such and truly serve the citizens that have given us the honor to be here and respect what they want and what they need. We are not here to play politics. We are here to ensure every child in Chatham County receives the best education humanly possible. We have students who need extra help that can only be given face to face. We have families who cannot pay for childcare. Nor can they be at home because they must go to work. In order for this to work for all students and ensuring no child falls to the cracks, we need more time and bold action. We need to have mobile hotspots put around the county so we know every child has access to Wi-Fi 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We need to make sure we have enough special education teachers and directors that are willing to go into homes and give that portion of our population the proper instruction they need. We need to ensure those students' IEPs are given the same level of instructions as they would be if they were in one of our buildings. Teachers should not be forced to come into the buildings for training and online instructions. They too have the same worries the rest of the population has with possible spread and having someone tend to the children while at work. We need to let families get their personal items that have been at school sites for the past 128 days. We need to let families return district property like media center books. We need to ensure there's enough time to fully and professionally train each and every teacher how to use a learning management system to its fullest capability before expecting them to teach with it. We need the time to be able to distribute the portable devices to those students who need them. I am also worried about those children who are physically and mentally abused who we cannot be able to track if they're not in our buildings. If those items are not fully in draft, then we will end up going backwards as a district. Over the past four years, I have started to see the gaps between all demographics starting to shrink due to the hard work of the teachers and the staff of this district. If we do not focus on our most vulnerable, then we will not be able to continue that success. Reopening has given me more phone calls, texts, Facebook messages, and emails than anything we have voted for over the past four years. And to be honest, all those responses have been about 50/50 of opening or virtual. I have received political threats if I did not vote a certain way. I have also received sympathy for the vote we are going to take today, knowing we are going to upset a lot of people no matter how we vote. I wish the district would have done another parent survey. I kept hearing the survey was done before the spike in the cases, so the results would have been different. That's great, but let's prove that. I wish we would delay the start of school until after Labor Day so we had time to do things right, to get teachers trained on the platform, and to have schools fitted for safety measures for when we were able to return to the classrooms. I wish we were given more opportunities besides the take it or leave it option of online learning. There should be an option allowed those parents who want to send their children to school to be able to. No staff members who want to go back in person can't. For those families that do not want to send their children back, they need to be able to have that option as well. We also need to give parents, students, the community as a whole dates when we will update them on the situation if we're going to extend online learning or we're going to change, or we're going to start opening up the buildings for those parents who want to. I have looked at all the data that has been given us, and I have researched. I've talked to doctors and nurses. I have asked for people to call me, text me, and email me so I know what is profoundly important to the citizens of Chatham County. Most importantly, I pray to God to give me the wisdom to do what is right. It has been 128 days the last time the schools, districts saw a normal. And I do not know, and I feel we will never go back to that again. I do know the public need to feel some sort of normalcy and control. The public is also crying out for more than one option. Webster defines option as one, an act of choosing. Two, the power or right to choose, freedom of choice. Three, something that may be chosen. So this is not an option for the public. They would not have the right to choose what is best for them, nor are we allowed to even vote on the proposal, only the calendar. We have a moral, ethical, and legal responsibility to educate the children of Savannah, Chatham County. I do not want to be known as the board who stood in the way of this challenge. I want to be known as the board who stood for surpassing this responsibility. We need to not only educate our children, we also need to be leaders in and for the communities we serve. I know that each of our votes here today will be blasted by some and praised by others. I know we have each come to our individual conclusion of what is not just best for our family in our situation. I know we each have our own personal feelings about this recommendation. With all of my concerns, with knowing that in-person learning is best for my own child, and with thoughtful meditation and prayer, I will be supporting the recommendation of the superintendent. I want to be able to work with her and the staff to mitigate as many of these concerns as quickly as possible. And I look forward to go back to in-person learning and seeing COVID-19 in our review years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson, I have Mr. Ketchmar.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. So before diving into the recommendation and the comments about the plan we heard today, I just wanted to make a few general observations based on some of the communications I've received, and I know we've all received, from constituents and members of the community. First, as a general matter, I think we need to do a better job teaching and helping students understand the scientific method. I say that because it's okay to state your best opinion based on available facts and then to modify your opinion as new facts come out. Changing your opinion as new facts come out is science. It's not a conspiracy. It's not being wrong or confused. Second, I think we need to do a better job of helping students think critically about sources of information. We all say this, but I still don't understand why smart, accomplished, successful people will believe something they read on social media posted by someone who isn't a scientist or a doctor over people who are scientists or doctors and are on the healthcare front lines and specialists in their fields. We've talked about gaps in science and gaps in critical thinking. Those are two that we should address. Third, it's unfortunate that schools and school districts are being asked to address broader societal issues and not their primary function, which is education. As Julie and Michael alluded to, for every communication I get about we need kids back in school, I get another one that says, how dare you think about putting kids back in school? But the issues that drive a lot of these comments are not necessarily education-related. I get lots of comments about the fear of losing jobs, of losing housing, of losing the ability to buy food because a parent needs to go to work. The school district shouldn't be, but is bearing the brunt of broader societal issues related to healthcare, employment, housing, food, childcare, and the lack of a safety net as part of addressing this pandemic. Countries that are successfully moving forward have addressed or attempted to address these issues, and we haven't. I keep hearing that other countries have opened schools so we can too. Those other countries, however, first severely limited community spread, and we have not. On one day last week, for example, the entire country of Germany had a total of 159 new COVID cases. That's the entire country of Germany. On July 14th, two days ago, in Chatham County, just Chatham County, we had 194 new cases. Dr. Davis's data from earlier today confirmed the alarming rise in cases and hospitalizations. Citizens in those other countries banded together for the common good to defeat the virus, something we haven't done here. Michael said it, it's become a divisive political issue. Unfortunately, rather than a cause we can rally around as Americans for the collective good, and it's disappointing. So with those general observations, I have some comments about the virtual start recommendation. And like Michael and Julie, I am disappointed that there's only one option in front of us. But I will say, I am supporting the recommendation and will vote yes. So here are my issues, and I share some of the same issues Julie and Michael identified. You know, first, I see the data showing a sharp rise locally in cases and hospitalizations. And in a vacuum, if we were focused solely on student and staff health and safety, I would agree with virtual learning almost indefinitely until we could minimize or eliminate risk. But we don't live in a vacuum. The weekly $600 CARES Act payment for those who are getting it is going to run out shortly. There are lots of parents, including teachers, who can't stay home with their students. And there are a lot of students who will struggle to thrive in a virtual setting, particularly special education, ESOL, and pre-K and young elementary students. There are also employers that might be able to adjust to a two- or three-day work week for employees who can't work from home but can't accommodate an employee who can't work from home being perpetually absent. And I've had employers call me and say, I'm going to have to lay off people if they can't come to work. There's no, there are limited childcare options. There are childcare challenges, and there's little or no social safety net for what's happening with this pandemic. I've said it before, and we've all said it, we're in an untenable situation. We're weighing the potential continued spread of the virus and potential health impact on students and staff and the broader community versus the impact of keeping 38,000 students home and the potential loss of income, employment, housing, and the rise in evictions, hunger, and related issues. You know, given the real-world impact of the path we are considering, I feel like we owe it to the community to at least discuss broadening our options. Looking at the data and the PowerPoint that was gone through, 65% of parents and 60% of staff indicated a preference for in-person school, either total in-person or a hybrid model. The task force also recommended that hybrid models be at least considered. But all we're discussing today is virtual school. We've rolled out a cyber academy, and that's the only other option that we're discussing today. Again, we don't live in a vacuum, and we have to deal with the broader societal issues that virtual school brings up. So any hybrid option should start with retaining virtual option choices and then asking parents who are capable of keeping their students home that they do so. I've heard from a number of parents who said they will remain virtual even if in-person becomes available. Next, we only ask staff willing to teach in-person that they do so. 60% of the staff said they want in-person or hybrid instruction. We don't force staff to come in if they don't want to. And then we implement a hybrid learning model with some in-person and some virtual learning, starting with students that will be significantly adversely impacted by virtual learning. Special needs children with disabilities, ESOL, and pre-K kids to start with. And importantly, for parents who want in-person school, and again, taught by teachers who want to be in school with appropriate health and safety measures. If we successfully implement that hybrid model, then we can start slowly expanding it with lower grades if and when the protocols are in place to minimize risk. So again, while virtual school is preferred in a vacuum, we don't live in that vacuum. As for concerns about the specific plans we've heard so far, I share some of the same concerns Julie raised, that we still don't have the details, and that's what parents and staff have been begging for. One of the main concerns I have is that I've been told that staff have been told, you must come to school, you must do your virtual instruction from your classroom, and that your children are not allowed in school. The vast majority of teachers that taught virtually in the spring worked hard and did the best they could. And it seems to me that we're punishing everyone for the sins of a few or the failings of a few. I really think staff should be given the flexibility to teach from home or bring their children to the classroom if necessary. Yes, all families have to deal with childcare, but the difference is, we're telling teachers three weeks before school starts about this new requirement. Many have reported that they've scrambled and can't find childcare on short notice or have also raised concerns about what happens when childcare shuts down for a positive COVID test. And there are several childcare facilities that have shut down on multiple occasions just since March. We need to be flexible and allow staff to teach from home or bring their kids in if they need to. Second, PPEs. We've heard plans about hygiene throughout the schools. I want to make sure that there are enough PPE available for teachers in their classrooms and that teachers don't have to come out of pocket to try to protect their health and safety. We also need training on PPE usage, not just for staff, but also for visitors and our students, how to wear a mask, et cetera. Finally, I really strongly urge that we develop some timelines. We identify dates when we'll evaluate local COVID data and tell the public whether we're continuing virtual school or planning to start in-person instruction. As one of our speakers said earlier, people need time to plan and as much notice as possible. Thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you, Mr. Ketchmar. Dr. Bringman?
I will not be as long, but I echo a lot of the same comments. I want to piggyback on what Mr. Ketchmar was just saying about allowing teachers to decide if they feel, if it works for them, but also if they feel safe enough to go into a school to teach from that school or if they do feel safe enough to teach from that school. So that option really does need to be an option for our teachers. I will be definitely supporting this calendar, and yes, I do want it to be extended as soon as possible, depending on the data, as was stated by some of our speakers. Online is the only option for me at this point in time. We can get to hybrid later. I have the privilege of my daughter's godmother being a PhD in viral immunology. She is on a team right now that is tasked with bringing the vaccine to the public. And when I asked her point-blank, would you send your kindergartner into our classroom seeing the data in Chatham County? She said absolutely not, and that's all I needed to know. It is her job, she is on the front lines, and she's still working from home. So at this time, I fully support a virtual learning environment and would love to see us move to a hybrid when those numbers go down and Dr. Davis can come back and visit us and tell us that there has been an exponential decrease in the growth of COVID cases in our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bringman. Dr. Hoskins-Brown?
Thank you. I don't have long comments, although I appreciate the research and preparation that my colleagues have put into sharing their point of view and summarizing the points of view of folks who have written them. I too have gotten the same emails and phone calls, and I fully support virtual I too have gotten the same emails and phone calls, and I fully support virtual learning. And I do believe that the choice, the idea of the choice exists in that the recommendation is for virtual learning to start the semester, and not that we have been given virtual learning for the entire semester, as many colleges and some other school districts have already decided to do. I think maybe that is too subtle or too implicit, and therefore not being viewed as a choice. But to me, I am aware and paying attention to the fact that the recommendation did not come for the entire semester. A lot of people have a lot of concerns, and I don't want it to be misunderstood that I don't have concerns because I did not orate them when I seconded, when I made the motion to accept the change to the calendar. The four that are most important to me at this time are, first, the consequence of asymptomatic people coming to work. That is a big concern for me, not just because three members of my family are high-risk, but because the disruption to the school day if everyone is in the schoolhouse and there is an asymptomatic or symptomatic person who tests positive, and we have to track all of the, do all the contact tracing, and do all the things that it takes to make sure that everyone is safe, that is surely a disruption to the education enterprise for the young people who are in the classroom in that building, at least for two weeks, if not longer. I'm also very concerned about people coming to work who have been exposed and who know that they have been exposed, but who feel like they have no choice but to come to work because they cannot afford not to come to work. And what will occur in our facilities for our staff and our young people if that occurs? And I understand a lot of conversation has been said about our young people, and I agree with everything that has been said about the importance of being face-to-face for young people, particularly those who are our special education learners, those for whom English is a second language, those for whom there's no childcare. I understand and I appreciate all of that. But the other thing that I haven't heard us talk about is the fact that we have greater than 50-some thousand people that are going into the schoolhouses. We have the staff that are going in there, and I am concerned for their health and safety as well. I am concerned about little people touching each other. I thoroughly enjoyed myself the last time I read in a classroom, and I was jumped and pummeled with hugs. I don't see little, little people having an easy time going into a post-pandemic environment. I don't see hormone-widdled teenagers having an easy time refraining from being in close contact with one another in this time. So I'm concerned about that. And I'm finally concerned about asymptomatic students, symptomatic students, staff, and faculty going back home and bringing risk to other members of the community. And so for that reason, I am in support of the delayed start with the virtual format in the way it's been presented, because those health risks, those public health risks are of greater concern to me, and certainly the idea of a preventable illness and a preventable death because of a decision I made today. I'm in support of the calendar as it's been presented.
I have Ms. Hall next.
I just want to make an appeal to the community, because the main thing that concerns me, I have no doubt that we're doing the correct thing in terms of the safety of our students and our staff. Until just a moment ago, no one at all today has mentioned the word death, and that's what we're talking about. This is a life and death situation, and I know none of us wants one person to die because we made this decision that we thought was best, and it was not. However, I do think in the childcare situation where you have people who must go to work and whose lives are in such despair right now, that we as a community, any employers in this community who can possibly help with the childcare situation. I know Dr. Lovett has mentioned that a lot of our churches are planning to step up to do what they can for people in their congregations who must be at work. Their work cannot be done virtually to help them with childcare concerns. And I would ask that every employer in this county do what they can to ease the burden of employees who have this situation where the schools are not open and they can't come to work because of lack of childcare. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. Well, I've heard the conversation today, and well, let me first say that I will be supporting this measure today. Another thing I'd like to say, I have family as well in the public schools. I also have family with pre-conditions of certain illnesses and going back to school full-time. Well, number one, the parents say they're not going to send them back right now. But I want to also ask, also include here, first, conditions must be safe for students, faculty, and work staff if we're going to send these children back to school. Ms. Hall took the words out of my mouth when she says, she said something about death, and I had already written it down. If a child comes to school, becomes ill unfortunately, and passes away with COVID-19, then how would we feel sending those children back to school before we get this disease under control? Now, I'm as well as many of us on the board of age, we ought to be very careful. And I only go to the grocery store, go out when I really, really need to. But when I go out, I see a lot of folk not wearing their masks. Why won't they wear a mask? If we want to lower our situation, let's do what the ones that really know how to handle this, since we don't, we don't have the knowledge, they do. Wear your mask, encourage your friends, your family to wear the mask. Stay out of places where you're in groups where you're not safe if you want to bring these numbers down. I'm tired of it as well, and I'm not going to do a long talk. I'm tired of it as well. But let's follow and encourage others. Wear their mask as well as when they stay socially distanced apart, and the follow-up as far as washing your hands and these kinds of things. We have a real problem on our hands. I understand parents need to return to work. Many of my family members need to return to work, but I don't want my family going back to school and getting sick and coming back and giving it to other family members. So some folk want to quote-unquote, have their cake and eat it too. Either we get this virus down, or we will, as a result of it, will suffer the consequences. Now, another thing also, let me just throw this out, and I'll be done. Hopefully, we will have a vaccine within the next, hopefully by the end of the year, but in reality, they are saying by the year '22 maybe. But if we get a vaccine, and many parents don't believe in vaccinating their children, where will we be? You'll have some folk who will go on and do what is necessary, and you'd have others that do nothing, still carrying the virus on. And also keep in mind that not only are we going to be, we're going to be dealing with COVID in the fall of the year, we're going to have our regular food season, and a lot of folk don't vaccinate, don't have those children to take those food shots. So we got to do something on our parts as well. We got to try to bring these numbers down by doing what we can do. And when I say we, I'm talking about all people. This virus is here to stay, and unless we do what we need to do to bring these numbers down, we're going to continue to have deaths. And it's unfortunate that this virus is affecting my race and a few of the other races as well. So let us do what we can do, and if we can hold school off for another week or so, we don't know how it's going to be. But let me say, Labor Day is coming up, and if folk behave on Labor Day like they did on Memorial Day and the Fourth of July, we're going to have another surge. So people, let's do what we can to be able to bring our children back in school. Yes, and as Ms. Wade said earlier, a lot of those students that she talked about, unfortunately, that did not tune in were in my district. And yes, I know they need to go back to class, but let's get the virus down first, so we won't have to close down again, shut down again, and start all over. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Howard Hall, and then we can move on, I believe.
Yes, we use data when making decisions as it pertains to budgets, policies, student achievement, retention, promotion, and so forth. I'd like to thank all of the constituents that contacted me via email, text messages, and telephone calls. I understand the pros and the cons for reopening school. We've heard them through other board members, so I won't bother to reiterate on those. We also understand the importance to have in-person or the hybrid model. Thirty-seven years ago during this time, I was a first-year teacher, and I was excited. And I know that many of our first-year teachers are excited, and I understand how they may be feeling right now due to what's going on. I also realize that students learn differently, and their instruction has to be differentiated. The greater impact they'll provide in instruction, of course, is face-to-face as opposed to FaceTime. But the operative word is safely. Reopening schools safely. We are currently categorized as substantial spread. Being a former kindergarten teacher, I love colors, red, yellow, green. We are currently in the red. I'm not dismissing in-person or hybrid model, I'm not dismissing it at all. But until we are in the yellow, which is moderate spread, or the green, low community spread, I am in support of the superintendent with the model that has been recommended. We must prioritize the safety of our children and their families with regards to the current pandemic situation as the number continues to increase. Once again, I'd like to thank all of the constituents for their feedback, for their questions and their concerns. We are all in this together. It is important that our families are safe, students, faculty, staff, and the families of everyone, because we are all in the same communities, Savannah-Chatham County. And as I said before, we are in the red. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Howard Hall. Before I make a remark and then ask for a vote, Dr. Lovett had wanted to respond to something that was said.
Thank you, Dr. Buck, and I appreciate the rich comments today. We'll be listening attentively to the transcript of the meeting. I do think it's important, because we have a lot of staff and parents listening to this presentation, to reiterate some points that I think may have gotten confused along the way. Number one, there have been several email transmissions to staff about return-to-work guidance. While some may have received premature communication, I not only communicated with them directly, but I also communicated and shared that communication with you, that said there would be different return-to-work conditions, because a pandemic requires adjustments. Individual staff members have indicated to me, I'm upset because I've been told I can't bring my children to school, I must return to the building. I immediately advised principals that that was not the direction given to them. The conditions are different, and we must behave differently. Those communications are a matter of public record. I was very clear that the return-to-work guidance, which I repeated several times today, would be different under pandemic conditions. So I want the staff to know that that is not the intention. Those communications were premature, and they will receive different communication. I also think it's important to reiterate that we learned a lot from the spring, but we've also received a lot of communication from our students, from our parents of students with special needs or students with disabilities. I will repeat, we will form work groups to ensure that we are indeed delivering a much better approach to instruction for those students who have special learning needs. I'm a special educator, and I'm a child development specialist. I have an affinity for making sure that we serve these children well, and I stand by that. Number three, when I made this recommendation, I said we would start virtually. I did not at any time indicate that we would be starting face-to-face after Labor Day. I was very clear, and I want to make it clearer, we will check the data regularly after Labor Day to determine when we can return to some form of face-to-face instruction. And I think that's important, because the staff is working right now to make sure that our spaces are ready for us to move. We are committed to that. You can go into buildings and see that work underway. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity, sir, to make sure that we're clear on these points, because what I do know is that people go to these meetings and they come out and quote, you said this, this person said this. Return-to-work guidance will look different. We actually, because we were voting on this today, we could not canvas staff before tomorrow. That survey of where staff would prefer tomorrow will launch either tonight or tomorrow. It is ready to go, and we will adjust accordingly. The work groups for the two groups that I mentioned have been in all of the communication. It is there for the written record. And again, we will delay, hopefully, we'll start with virtual, with always a goal to move to face-to-face. I appreciate your attention to those reminders.
I would, as I make some very brief remarks, safety is still number one with me. I believe more than probably most anybody else around that kids need to be in the classroom, especially little kids. I think little kids prosper and grow from touching each other and hugging their teacher and learning how to read and doing all the things that youth and childhood is all about. But right now, if I had a child in this school, they would not be going into a school if it opened. My kids are in Valdosta, and they're being done the same way we're doing here. My other kids are in Decatur, and their plan is identical to Chatham County's. I say that because I think, we all say that we're open to each other's views, but we all think down deep, we know better than anybody else, which is really the way we should go. And I would say to you again, that safety has got to be number one. The first time I sat here and read that Susie Smith of Hess Elementary K-8 had passed away from COVID, I would feel like I had failed in a vote I'm taking today. And that's not trying to be modeling or anything like that. The safety aspect is just too important. The superintendent and I had occasion to sit on that webinar yesterday, and what we really heard was, we can do anything we want to. You don't have to require a mask in a classroom, you don't have to socially distance at any age, you don't have to do any of these things. And when somebody... And when somebody wrote a question and said, "But what responsibility do we have if there's a death?" There was silence on the webinar. The last thing I would say in support of this whole thing is I know that it's an extreme case, and I know little kids don't get the virus very often, but they should take it home to grandmother and, and parents, because those groups are very vulnerable. I had the occasion on December the 12th to be on a ventilator for 48 hours. I would not wish that on anybody. The fright of not knowing whether you can breathe or not changed my life again. I think we can vote now. You've heard the resolution. All in favor of the resolution, raise your hands, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. The motion passes nine, zero, zero. Now, folks, we've got, I'm going to go way out of order here. I congratulate you on making a hard decision that perhaps none of us really wanted to do, but we did what needed to be done for the kids. I'm going to ask you to go, go five, and we're going to vote on the tentative, uh, budget, and we're going to vote on, uh, something else.
It was spending resolution, sir. That's critical to this agenda.
First thing is, uh, the spending resolution, please. Uh, Kurt, you want to read that? Uh, Mr. Hattig, I want to read that.
Yes, sir. Happy to, uh, bring forward a action item for the board. This is the FY 2020, 2021. FY 2020, 2021 Spending Resolution. Whereas the Board of Education for the City of Savannah and the County of Chatham, uh, your microphone is still loud, sir. We can hear you loud and clear.
It doesn't show that I'm off this time. Am I on now?
All right, continuing on with the agenda item as, uh, for the board to vote on. FY 2020, 2021 Spending Resolution. Whereas the Board of Education for the City of Savannah and the County of Chatham, for good and sufficient reason, is unable to adopt a budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021. And whereas the public exigency is best served by authorizing the superintendent to continue to expend funds to continue operations. Thus be it resolved by the Board of Education for the City of Savannah and the County of Chatham that the superintendent may expend funds from all funds for the month of August 2020 not to exceed 1/12 of the final amended budget for all funds for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2021, plus debt service and capital expenditures known to be due in July and essential COVID-19-related expenditures. This written as of this 16th day of July 2020.
You've heard this resolution. Is there motion to this effect? Mr. Johnson moves. Ms. Hall seconds. Mr. Johnson, anything? Ms. Hall, anything? Board comments, questions, anybody? Ms. Wade?
I just want to, I think, for the public and also for myself, I know that we, a month or two ago, when we should have passed the budget, we said each month we'd be evaluating it, because we haven't done it. I know we have the spending resolution for August also coming up. This is only voting for 1/12 of this budget, right?
Right, right.
If you have a final budget, we're going to have public hearings and go through all of that process. And I just think it's really clear for the public to understand that this looks, to me, who have been doing this for a while, like a budget adoption without the required process. This is just allowing spending in August for 1/12 of the proposed budget will likely be right back here in August, doing this again for the month of September until we're able to pass a final budget. And that is because the state legislature was so late in passing their budget that we were unable to do ours. Is that right?
That's correct. That's what we said in June. The resolution you just heard states that it's 1/12, and the next motion for us to consider is the tentative adoption of the budget.
I know it says that, but sometimes you need to.
Well, I understand. I, I understand. I'm, I'm just reemphasizing what you're saying, so they'll hear it too. Uh, anyone else have a comment? All in favor of spending resolution, raise your hands, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. The spending resolution passes. Moving on to the tentative adoption of the budget, which means we then will hold public hearings and have many more discussions before the actual adoption of the final budget. All of this is later than usual.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. Yes, we have an agenda item. This would be the tentative adoption, which would begin the budget process for eventual final adoption. Board action for today's agenda, tentative adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget for all funds. In accordance with law and policy, staff presents the fiscal year 2021 budget for all funds for tentative adoption. The budget consists of five components: the general fund budget, general obligation debt budget, special revenue funds budget, capital projects funds budget, and other funds budget. The tentative budget under consideration reflects no millage increase for a total combined millage of 18.881 mills, 18.881 mills for maintenance and operation, and zero mills for general obligation bond debt. The general fund budget, fiscal year 2021 general fund budget expenditures and other uses total $445,394,682. This budget will receive $290,468,813 in revenue from local taxes, $147,013,000 in state revenues, $3,306,617,000 in other local revenues, and $2,610,791,000 in federal revenues. The estimated ad valorem tax millage rate for calendar year 2020 is 18.881 mills. The ad valorem tax revenue were calculated using an adjusted net M&amp;O digest of $14,921,512,858 for calendar year 2020. The fiscal year 2020 general obligation debt, the GO debt, budgeted expenditures totals $2,201,306. Please note, this amount is duplicated in the debt service fund budget in the other funds section listed below in your agenda item. The estimated ad valorem tax millage rate for calendar year 2020 is zero. The ad valorem tax revenues were calculated using a net bond digest of $15,445,288,768, $288,768 for calendar year 2020. Special revenue funds budget, the fiscal year 2021 special revenue funds budgeted expenditures and other uses total $79,468,758. Following budgets are included as part of the special revenue funds. These budgets include Title IV, Title II, Department of Defense CARES Act, Charter School Grant, Sick Leave Bank, Victoria Jenkins Charitable Trust, special programs, pre-kindergarten lottery, technical preparation, Coastal Georgia Academy. Title III, Title I, Federal Special Education and Food Services, for a total as listed of $79,468,758. Other funds budgets, the fiscal year 2021 other funds budgeted expenditures total $10,096,835. The following budgets are included as part of other funds: debt service, workers' compensation, unemployment and employee dental plan, for a total as listed, $10,096,835. Capital projects funds, the fiscal year 2021 capital projects funds budgeted expenditures total $81,598,000. This budget is based upon estimated costs to be incurred between July 1, 2020 and June 30, 2021 for approved projects. Thus, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education tentatively adopt the following budgets: fiscal year 2021 general fund budget for $445,394,682. Fiscal year 2021 GO debt budget for $2,201,306. This amount is duplicated in other funds below. Fiscal year 2021 special revenue funds budgets for $79,468,758. Fiscal year 2021 other funds budget for $10,096,835. Includes GO bond debt from above. Fiscal year 2021 capital projects funds budget for $81,598,000.
Heard the resolution. Is there a motion to that effect, that this be adopted? Ms. Hines moves. Dr. Breenland seconds. Ms. Hines, anything?
Um, it's, I just want to say that, um, I'm glad we're able to move on with our budget and look forward to our final adoption after our hearings.
Thank you. Dr. Breenland? Anybody else have any concern? Dr., uh, Mr. Johnson, excuse me.
I'm getting promoted today, too, I guess. Um, no, it's, um, I'm going to support the resolution to get the ball rolling. Um, I am looking forward to seeing the, um, details of what the budget is, so that way we can, as everybody likes to say, the devil's always the details of where the money is going. So I am looking forward to seeing all that kind of laid out in front of us, so we can really have an honest, um, discussion of where we want to, uh, require. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor of this motion, raise your hands, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Motion passes nine, zero, zero. Ms. Catchmore, so nice to be able to see your hand instead of hearing Catchmore. Um, moving on to, um.
Catchmore, aye.
I'd like to move on to Goal One, uh, ratification of Edgenuity, and then the catalog supply, but we're not going to read that whole thing.
Thank you, Mr. Board Presidents. Your agenda item for action on ratification of contract, M21008 Digital Libraries Comprehensive Site Licenses. The Division of Data and Accountability and the Division of Academic Affairs are requesting approval to purchase the software license suite as a ratification from the Engenuity, Edgenuity Incorporated of, of Scottsdale, Arizona. Edgenuity provides a full suite of initial credit courses for elementary, middle, and high school students in English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies. It is aligned to the Georgia Standards of Excellence and is used in over 150 districts in the state of Georgia to include Atlanta Public Schools, Richmond County, Bibb County, Fulton County, and DeKalb County. Engenuity's advanced placement courses include rigorous coursework, an array of multimedia activities and assignments, and an online platform for in-depth discussion. The world languages courses are aligned to state and national standards and help students build a strong foundation in vocabulary, grammar, and communications in Spanish, French, German, Chinese, and Latin. Career technical education courses give middle and high school students the opportunity to explore exciting careers and plan for the future, while also allowing high school students to complete specific pathways and be prepared to take the end-of-pathway assessments. The self-paced learning and pre-testing aspects allow students to spend more time on what they need and less time on content they've already mastered, thus helping students accelerate and graduate on time. Staff is recommending the award to Edgenuity Incorporated for the Digital Libraries Comprehensive Site Licenses to be used for all schools K through 12 for the FY 2020, 2021 school year at a total cost of $299,992.50. Thus be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the board approve the award of the contract as a ratification request to Engenuity Incorporated for a total cost of $299,992.50.
I wonder what we're getting for that extra 50 cents. Uh, someone like to make the motion? Dr. Haskins Brown moves. Dr. Breenland seconds. Uh, Dr. Haskins Brown, you've got anything? Dr. Breenland, anything? Anybody want to have questions, uh, comment? Yes, uh, Ms. Hall?
Just that I'd like us to get a chance to, ah, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'd like to get a chance to, um, have a viewing of this program, so we are aware of what it is. Um, it sounds very exciting, so I hope that we have that opportunity.
I'm, I'm certain that they can arrange that for us, Ms. Hall. Thank you.
Honey, you can come over to my house and help Holly and Ian.
Okay. It's good to see you today, Sean.
You too.
Anybody else have comments? All in favor of this motion, raise your hands, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Motion, any opposition? Motion passes nine, zero. Uh, the last motion of the, the Goal section is, uh, on, uh, education materials, and I'm not going to even have Mr., uh, Hattig go read this. I'm just going to say, thus be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the board approve the award of RFP 20-28, and the rest we can fill in, at a total annual estimated cost of $2 million. Is there a motion to that effect? But moved by Ms. Hall, second by Ms. Hines. Ms. Hall, anything?
No.
Ms. Hines, anything? I was glad to know that there was 59 people wanting to bid on stuff. Um, anyway, any other comments? All in favor of the motion, raise your hands, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. The motion passes nine, zero, zero. Like to move back up to the consent agenda, and I will ask, uh, Dr. Haskins Brown to make that motion.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Been moved by Dr. Haskins Brown, second by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hands, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. The consent agenda is approved. Moving on back to the board matters. Uh, I tried to move us from having to do these board matters tonight, but I'm assured that we have to do them, uh, because of Title IX stuff. So, um, what I'm going to ask is, uh, if you will bear with me, if we'll move back up to 8.01. And 8.01 has to do with, um, bullying. That is J C D A G on bullying. It's been reviewed by the board attorney and is being presented for first reading. Are there any comments that you would like to see looked at? Ms. Wade?
From Brian Dennison.
I can't hear you, Ms. Wade.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
If we could get a general description from probably Brian Dennison on about why we're having to make all these Title IX changes, we could probably fly through a lot of these quickly, but I'd like to understand what entitlement is driving.
Mr. Dennison, you want to help us with that?
Yes. Thank you for this opportunity. Uh, new Title IX regulations were, uh, were published on May 6, 2020. They go into effect on August 14, 2020. Um, the guy, the, the, when the rule was issued by OCR, they actually came with like about 2,033 pages to help explain these regulations. But the actual regulations themselves aren't quite as daunting as the guidance put out from OCR. But I do think it's important to review that guidance to see where they're really coming from. But the big picture item is you cannot discipline anyone for sexual harassment as defined under Title IX until you go through this Title IX grievance procedure. And for schools, this procedure doesn't require a live hearing because of the sensitive nature of Title IX. Um, they gave us a special exception for, uh, for a K, K through 12. If, the universities actually have to have a live hearing, but we don't. But the hearing process is extensive. have to have a live hearing, but we don't. But the hearing process is extensive. There's a regulation that, that there's a lot of back and forth. It will go on a long time. And so a lot of these amendments here, they speak to the need to carve out sexual harassment, grievance procedures, and responses from everything else we normally do, since the federal government has decided to treat these as special and to not allow us to do anything disciplinary-wise until we've gone through this process, which, if you've seen the protocol, which is not on, not in these materials, but you've reviewed it, you will see that will be an extensive process. So that's the big picture. Goes into play August 14, and we needed to account for that. And then you can see with bullying in particular, we're trying to separate bullying and that bullying process from a Title IX sexual harassment procedure, and you see that with a lot of what we have here. I think beyond Title IX, with the JAA changes, that was brought on by our engagement with OCR in various cases involving children with disabilities and how to respond when there are allegations of discrimination by staff, because that did not fit necessarily within the existing regulation under JCE or JAA. So we needed to do that. So JCER is really there to roadmap all the various procedures and protocol responses there are to kind of put it in one place from the student side. And then we had to make changes on the employment side because the Title IX provisions apply to employee rights as well as they do for students. So you can remove, you can, you can place an employee on leave, but in terms of other disciplinary actions, you know, you're limited under Title IX as well until you go through that grievance procedure. So that's why the employee pieces were impacted as well.
So, Mr. Dennison, that would be JCDJAA regulation, JAAAR, JCEBR. Is that what those?
So looking, yeah, let me see here. Looking at the policies and regulations, JCDAG was heavily impacted by the Title IX. That's really why the change was made. JAA and JAAAR, that was more to address the gap in handling discrimination claims under 504 with, with a protocol that would include that for employees, so where people would know where to go. JCEBS, I think that, that was impacted by Title IX. JCE, that was an overall cleanup. Title IX was the impetus, but it's broader than that because it provides a roadmap across the board. I know there was some concern about removing the, the hearing right that is provided for in the policy of JCE. That can be put back in, but we felt like there were other provisions that allowed for that right, but it could be put back in. That wouldn't be problematic. JD is also harassment-based, sexual harassment-based changes, JDR, JDF. Here, we wanted to make sure that there could be some classroom management that could be done without having to follow the Title IX grievance procedure. So we tried to carve a piece out there. If OCR decides they disagree with us, they could disagree with us one day, but we felt like we needed to empower teachers to feel like they could take some immediate action in their classroom without having to follow the whole grievance procedure. JDDA and JDDAR, that was a change we talked about about a year ago, making that process took longer than it should have. We acknowledge it is not brought on by the sexual harassment changes, but it does, we think, take into consideration what the Board wanted before. I think the key provision there is it allows the superintendent to step in if a criminal procedure no longer is going forward against a child, the superintendent is allowed to step in and take action there instead of it being stuck with a, with a machinery going forward regardless of the status of that action. So that's a key change there. It also takes things out of the policy and puts it in the reg because we felt the policy had things that really belonged in the reg. Immunization has nothing to do with these changes. G A E B is driven by sexual harassment changes. GAE is impacted by the sexual harassment regulations. GAM is impacted by the sexual harassment regulation. And then GBNR is impacted by the sexual harassment regulations. JC, JGCCA has nothing to do with it. And JCG-R is, is health-based and nursing-based and doesn't have to do with it. So that's the overview.
Um, then, okay, JGCCA, head lice. So that one has nothing to do with.
Correct.
And that one is just a, well, that's a policy. That's a first reading to that.
Yeah, the nurse, the, a nurse Wilson and her team had some policies on the docket, basically. That's what those others are.
Okay, those are first readings and on all of these. And so what I'm going to ask board members to do is take at your leisure, but quickly, not tonight, read them very carefully. If you have questions that concern you about this, then, you know, through Ms. Mary Davis Brown, get to Mr. Dennison and ask him for an opinion, and let us all share in that so that he doesn't have to duplicate a lot of things. But then we'll be prepared to vote on, on changes next, at the next meeting, which is really only in about two weeks. So, but that keeps us in line with the new federal stuff. Any comments or questions about that? Yes, Dr. Haskins Brown?
I just wanted to make sure I understood what Mr. Dennison said about this line, termination based on sexual harassment must comply. Wait a minute, that's the wrong one. Sorry. The line about being removed from a classroom not being remedial or disciplinary prevents it from being a student discipline record issue. Is that what that sentence does? It allows the teacher to be able to use that tool without it being an enforcement discipline issue? Is that what you were saying?
If a teacher sees a student being sexually, physically, sexually assaulted in class, it allows the teacher to remove that child from class without having to go through a grievance procedure.
Okay, thank you.
That's an example of how that could play out.
Thank you. Any other?
It's an immediate, it's an immediate response. It's in, it's an in-the-moment response is what it's intended, not a long-term disciplinary matter.
Thanks. Mr. Ketchmore?
Yeah, thank you for the Title IX explanation. That helps. My only comment was on JCE, the student complaint and grievances. I'd prefer to see the appeal rights stay in policy and not move to the regulation.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other? We have a fly that's driving me crazy. Any other comments or questions? Oh, Ms. Wade, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll email these. I have a lot of concerns with JDDA. They're the same concerns I've had for years and years and years, so I'll just use this as an opportunity to maybe actually have them go through, and I'll connect with you, Brian. But when, I know we're always up against the student handbook timeline, and we got to get that published, and we're always stressed out to get all these done. Is that impacted by this?
Well, you'll see in JD, I guess, R, you'll see we're, we're changing the way we share the handbook. We're going to do it electronically. We'll still have physical copies in all the classrooms and printouts for anybody that wants them, but this way we don't have to have the whole printout books all ready to go. Of course, things got moved a little, back a little bit, but our team is actually going to be meeting Tuesday of next week to try to start incorporating the JD, JDR, and other changes. We can keep the JDAA ones off the hot stove for now, but our hope is that we can really know where we're going to stand, especially with JD and JDR that are so heavy in the, in the handbook, so we can go ahead and get those changes incorporated and get the formatting all going. So, yeah, that, that, that normal rush is there as your, your favorite. But I, but this year we had an excuse with the, with the May 6 regulations, unlike in prior years. I think we had a good excuse, but we, that is, that is an issue. We need to move. That's one of the key reasons we need to move is, is to get the handbook done.
I'll look at this closely, and even now that we're done with the big back-to-school vote, and I'm trying to get my comments to everyone on email.
I, I just want to compliment the staff about finally doing an electronic handbook. First of all, they're easier to change. It saves a heck of a lot of money. And you know, and I know, most people take them home, throw them in the trash can, and never look at them until their kids get caught up in something. So I think it's a great way to go in the future. But any other comments about?
Dr. Buck?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's also, let us also keep in mind, some folk do not have access to computer and running off the information.
That's already planned, Ms. Hines.
Yes, I understand.
They will be printing out some for that, that group of.
Very well.
Any other comments or questions?
Dr. Buck, it's Marshall Withers.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to let you know, the one, the Student Health Services, that was a, that was a recommendation just to waive one section of the, that regulation because of COVID-19. So that one won't be brought back next time. That was just a courtesy of the regulation. So no action required. That's just an information item.
For board members, that was inoculations and services that our nurses provide that are not being provided now because of COVID and other things. And so it was just, in essence, waiving them doing it for one year, but they'll be back doing it next time. Any other comments? Thank you, Board, very much. Could I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Ms. Hines. All in favor, say aye. Thank you for your attention.